Welcome to the City Commission meeting Tuesday, July 22, 2025. Thank you for coming. Please join me in my last salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, roll call.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Here.
Commissioner Opel?
Here.
Commissioner Motta?
Here.
Commissioner Minton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Jared. We have a work session this evening with four items on the agenda. Do we want to allow public comment on any of those or all of those? What is your pleasure?
I'll move. We approve public comment on each agenda item.
Second.
I don't think anybody's going to talk about the updates, but sure, why not? Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is the Riley County Police Department update.
Good evening. I am Erin Friedline, Deputy Director of RCPD. And I am going to do the update. Director Pete is on vacation, so I am stepping in for him. And I brought a PDF. I wanted to just update you guys. In June, the Kansas Bureau of Investigations, they certify the crime numbers for 2024. I know it's about a usually anywhere from a six to eight month delay. But in your packet, I just thought it'd be good for you guys to know what the crime looks like in Riley County. And obviously, that would include the city of Manhattan. And when Riley County Police Department makes an arrest within the city limits of Manhattan, such as in Potawatomi County, that is counted in our crime numbers because it's our ORI number when we report that to the state. So just for reference there. But you'll see our crime rate, 2.8 per 1,000 individuals on violent crimes and 14.2 for 1,000. Things were down for us in 2024. So, I mean, in general, we continue to be a safe community compared to some of our other counterparts. I was going to go through some of these a little bit quicker, but you'll see some of our numbers are really, really small. So when we say, oh, a 6% decrease, well, that was, you know, too. So I don't want to obviously overexaggerate some of these numbers as well because we don't have, you know, in 2023, we had eight robberies, strong arm robberies. In 2024, we had six. You know, aggravated assaults, that's in batteries. So that would be something where someone pulls a weapon, such as a firearm or a knife or something like that. That is a crime that kind of post COVID, we've saw significant increases in. So we were happy to see that that started to trend down a little bit in 2024. And I do think that, and I'll talk about that in the end, that maybe through some of our camera initiatives for safety, I can't prove it to you, but I think anecdotally, that that could be part of the reason of just trying to have a safer environment. Because there is a section of town where we have higher armed assaults like that as well, too. We are 40% less violent than the Kansas average. We are 30% below the state average as well. So, I mean, these are things that I think it's important for the City Commission to know is, you know, you guys are out and about a lot in the public of why it is a safe community to want to live, build houses in, chamber to invite businesses in. You know, I think these are things for you guys to have in your back pocket to kind of advertise that this is a good, safe community to want to live in and support. This one's really hard to see, but we, for law board purposes, when we present information, we compare Riley County to counties that are similar in our population size. So that's why we've looked at Leavenworth and Butler Counties as well because they have very similar populations around that 70,000 or so mark as well. And you can see just by looking at the cell information there, the red cell indicates that that crime's greater or equal to the state average. Riley County does not have a red cell in that regard. So we do, we do really, really well in that area. But I usually get asked, you know, how, how do we compare? Now, I know, like Gary County, it's a county population of probably just over 35,000. You know, their overall crime rate is 20.4 and we were at 18. So just a touch under them as well. And then we often get compared to Lawrence or Douglas County because of the institutions and whatnot. But Douglas County, 122,000 roughly population, and their overall crime rate's 22.2. So I would say they're still do a good job. We are below that, but obviously dramatically different in population sizes, though, as well. And then sometimes just even looking at our neighbor, Topeka. Topeka kind of Shawnee County has 179,000 roughly. Their crime rate is 34.7, so a little higher and kind of over some state averages as well for that, that part of our, our neighbors, too. So that was kind of just a quick snapshot of crime in our community. So things are doing well. You know, if you see the officers, I think tell them, keep up a good work. Sometimes we need a pep talk, I think, when we're out there or just wanting to know that you guys actually know that we're trying to work hard and do a good job in that regard. And one other thing I wanted to mention, we've been bringing it up with the law board and had some good initial support and maybe want to continue to build this out depending on what all that looks like. But we have license plate reader cameras around the outskirts of Manhattan. And most of our camera initiative is Manhattan. It's not out in our broader Riley County just yet. And then we have some cameras inside our business district as well. And between those two systems, like even just tracking, those got instituted in 2020, late 2023, 2024. And just even year to date, we've solved over 70 crimes just because of those cameras. I mean, the ability to kind of quickly react. We have an intelligence unit. They have their radio on. If they hear a call come out from dispatch and we know that's an area that has cameras or, you know, we know of a vehicle description or something from that crime, they're instantaneously, when they're in the, in the crime center unit, pulling that information up and then getting on the radio and feeding that real time. And, I mean, we've, we've had some sexual batteries that occurred in local establishments, businesses where the intelligence unit was tracking the, the vehicle and stopped them on the other side of town. But before the even officer is trying to get to the actual business, I mean, that's how quick we can sometimes get some things resolved. So we are trying to expand that. The city has been a great partner for us on that. They obviously have a lot of cameras around town, whether it's traffic lights or whatnot, too, parking garages. But I think that could be a continued good partnership for us. So we've had some discussions with them and they seem very much wanting to continue to keep a safe community. And if we can resolve some crimes, I know some of this is going to always be reactive. We don't have the staffing, nor would I be able to argue the crime rate to probably have true real time crime centers that are monitored 24/7 for Manhattan. That's probably not realistic for us this way. But we are able to solve a lot of crime or even in progress, kind of keep the officer safe or tracking or get leads that they never would have had right away as well. But I would entertain any questions you guys have. But that was just kind of the update I wanted to provide to you guys and at least have you guys have some documents and information as well.
Thank you, Erin. Questions?
I mean, I think that was really helpful. I appreciate the, the slides. We don't often get those slides, so I appreciate that. I do also appreciate the kind of realistic approach of cameras ever would be great or manning those 24/7, but know that there's kind of a financial feasibility in all of that and maybe the crime doesn't. I don't know if you'll be able to answer this, but when you're setting up the targets for, from budget to staffing, like where is that crime target rate? That sounds weird. Is it just always trying to decrease? Is that the goal? Are we looking at certain initiatives and saying this needs to come down by X amount?
I would say when you look at things where we want to say, it's hard to say, boy, we're just going to decrease domestic violence across the board because it's hard to be in those households. And I would caution the police department to say, we want to see less sexual assaults reported because I would argue with you guys, it's probably under-reported. So, so not always a crime rate, but just trying to know, like, we, we use a lot of, like, what is the state average? What has Riley County's historical average been? But I do think, you know, as we continue to, staffing's always a challenge, but those, those cameras and just some kind of system just gathering data for us to eventually legally and with due process tap into when we need it. And we likely can do a lot with civilian personnel versus sworn personnel. Like, this is an expensive deal. You, you got equipment, you got training, you have a lot invested in someone like me where maybe the professional staff, when they don't have to go to the academy and have recertifications and they love just mining data and social media for us, they can be an exceptional resource to have some other ways to address and help policing on that end without saying, well, we need 10 more cops in our crime center as well. So I think using professional staff along with officers is probably going to be a good combination also going forward.
Cool. Thank you.
No question. Just, obviously, I've seen a lot of this. I think it's a great job. Really do appreciate the slides and showing everybody this. Actually, at the last law board meeting just yesterday, we were talking about these systems and the police department is looking at a new system that basically makes it so they can integrate all these different cameras into one place because obviously different cameras, different software. It's the software that brings them all together and then uses artificial intelligence to go through. So I think, you know, may just be Little Manhattan, Kansas, but we are looking at the new technologies and doing this type of stuff. And I know everyone was pretty excited about those. I think you set the goal at 100 and you're already at 70?
Yeah. Internally, our goal is to solve 100 crimes with the cameras. And year to date, we're already at 70, so that's good. But we, you know, any continued support from the City Commission, the Chamber of trying to work with businesses, but like Commissioner Motta said, everybody has their own system. So if we can have a software that sits just behind it, where it universally brings that into us, to me, that's probably the best economical solution to try and bring all that data together.
Thanks.
Thanks for, thanks for the info and, and the numbers. I think it's great. And we've talked about solving crimes once they happen, and that's a really good thing. And I really applaud that. What kinds of things do we have going for us? And what kinds of things can we look to improve when it comes to like the preventing the root causes? Like what, what makes Manhattan different than, than say Butler or Saline County?
I could talk a long time about this because this is something that I am really proud of for Riley County Police Department. We do have an intelligence-led policing side of it. And we actually call it, you know, cops, like we have our own playbook. A lot of cops have done sports or whatever. So we call these playbook things where our intel unit is kind of looking. So whether it's traffic crashes, a higher incident of assaults, batteries, or we've just had loitering in the park, we, we can, we track all those calls for service. And we even know times a year, you know, we have an idea during Christmas time where our burglaries are likely to increase, where the college kids are leaving for the time. So we put these plays together and we call, call it hotspot policing, where you try and infiltrate an area where we send an officer there. It comes up on their, on our CAD, our computerator dispatch screen. And it says, hey, go spend some time in this one, two, three block radius. And it's just the visibility of it. So they can sit in their car and work on a report. They could be out and about just talking to somebody. But those are the kinds of things when people that are wanting to commit crime and they see a cop at irregular hours, but boy, I saw a cop here yesterday and now there's another cop here today. It just makes it an inviting environment as well. So those are kind of some things that we try and do. And then the traffic plays that we call them, just trying to, we know peak times of day. We know intersections. It's not always the easiest to sit somewhere and try and enforce it. But those are some of the ideas that we try to employ. But I think they make great strides to keeping us a safe environment. Like, it's just like the, the drug thing. Don't, don't allow an open air drug market. Don't make it comfortable. You want to sell drugs in Manhattan, Kansas? We're going to make it very uncomfortable for you to do so with consequences tied to that if we can catch you. And I think those are the types of things that have been instilled in us to try and keep a safe community.
That's good. And that actually really leads into my other questions that don't have anything to do with any of this. So we have had an increase in enforcement of some of the Kansas hemp laws with some of the established businesses in, in Kent. They're not black market. They're, they're trying to operate within the bounds of the law. Can you kind of talk about what's kind of spurred that kind of, I guess, I don't know if it's more strict or just increased enforcement?
Sure. You know, overall, I would say the state of Kansas hasn't changed their laws on the Hemp Act. So you get a little bit into, there's the United States Farm Bill, which is, you know, national government type thing. And then you have the State of Kansas Hemp Act. And I would say, you know, shops, Manhattan included and around the area, you know, when they buy products from other states, you know, it is on that business or company to try and make sure they are following the law. Now, I would say the state of Kansas probably hasn't always had the best oversight program for that either. But when it came to the police department's attention through intelligence and court proceedings, where, you know, we, we are coming in contact with citizens who are showing us receipts and believing they went to an establishment, a lawful establishment, thinking they purchased something that was legal, only to find out per the state of Kansas laws, it is illegal. When we kind of ran over that over again, like it's important that that business, you know, be just in what they're doing and making sure they're following the law. So as we were kind of looking at those court cases and what the citizens that were getting in trouble told us, we thought it was prudent for us to actually educate. So we went through the businesses in town and did an education. There was one business that we actually did search warrants on because of additional criminal information. I won't get in that too far because that case continues. But the other ones, just trying to do that approach of like, understand you're getting these products from out of state, but you guys have to follow Kansas hemp laws. And then really trying to encourage them to reach out to their counsel, legal counsel on what they should be doing to make sure that they are compliant with Kansas state law. And so we, we're trying not to teach the law or anything else. It is that enforcement thing, but we just updated the law board. We had went around and done another check and several of the businesses were, were selling the actual flour or bud type purchase. That is illegal in the state of Kansas. I don't care where you get it from. It's illegal to sell that type of product. And all the businesses were in compliance and had pulled all those types of products from their shelves and stuff like that. So I know there's always a debate on whether marijuana should be legalized or not. Right now, it's, it's not. And so we are at least trying to address the citizens that we're coming in contact with when they're learning what they thought was okay is actually illegal substance in the state of Kansas.
Okay. I had another question about like, kind of, just how much kind of extra time did, how much extra staff time was spent on that? And like, I guess it kind of rolls into another one of what we're trying to do to avoid like overtime. Because I know that's really pretty big budget item, so kind of putting those two things together.
Yeah, so I, I do not know how much time for our investigations division was spent on like that search warrant or anything like, I don't have those numbers prepared for you. But, so our patrol division does a squad-based policing and that marries up with calls for service and time of day. And so the officers generally work 4:10. So that kind of, our sworn overtime is actually very reasonable and year to date, we're under budget. Where we are over budget on overtime is in our jail division and our corrections section. And that just, we are at 124 inmates as of this morning. And sometimes they don't all classify correctly. And so we have to use other jurisdictions to house those inmates. So the, there's usually overtime costs in driving to other locations to bring them before court. Some of the judges, you know, can do Zoom but don't always do Zoom and things like that. So, and that is an area that we continue to kind of struggle with keeping staffing. We're still, we're doing better. We were at six. Now we're at four down. So, but, but that is the area where Riley County Police Department is having excess overtime is in our corrections division. On the sworn side, we're actually managing it okay. But I apologize, I don't have those numbers.
That's okay.
Okay.
What do you think we can do to reduce the population in the jail?
Wow.
Could I say something here?
Yeah.
Judge Bosch contacted me because he had a drug court, but they lost the federal funding. And so I think it's very important that perhaps we can use some opioid money or something like that to start up the drug court because then you go to drug court and you don't necessarily have to go to jail. You, you know, you can find other ways. And, but it is true. We, we have way too many people in jail. And I think one of the problems is the finding bail. And, you know, we've kind of got debtors' prison for some people there. They can't bond out and so they're stuck there and...
Yeah, it's, it's a really kind of a juxtaposition to say like, man, we have really low crime rates in Manhattan, but our jail is packed to the gills.
It is. And as you can imagine, we could probably talk about that for a couple hours on ideas. I will say, so on the city of Manhattan, for any city court charges, the prosecution office and the city judge has worked wonderfully for us for times when there probably needs to be an OR bond or owner reconnaissance bond or anything of that. So I would say most of our jail are definitely the district court cases that are, that are felonies. And on the one hand, I would, I applaud the judges that when we arrest somebody for aggravated batteries or assaults, and you guys know, we've had shootings in town. We've not had a homicide as of late, but it can happen and they do happen. And I appreciate that the judges do set and hold, we have a bond schedule. They adhere to the bond schedule to hold seemingly these right people and what RCPD doesn't want to see is any kind of the retaliation type stuff. Get, get traction and go after people there. So on the one hand, I would say, you know, if I had to show you the list of people and their charges for what they're sitting in jail for pre-trial status, you would probably be fairly agree, understandable that these would be felony type cases. Now, trying to get public defenders and people assigned and because you can fire attorneys, you know, there's not always maybe enough public defenders to go around. I, I can't, I can't really intelligently speak to speedy trial and how that doesn't actually go, go through on that. But, you know, there, there's a lot going on to probably try and improve this. And I'm sure Riley County at some point has to seemingly look at adding even an additional court judge and stuff. Because maybe if we, our judges currently do civil and criminal cases. And, you know, maybe someday in the future, separating out the civil with a different judge so there could be a true criminal docket. You know, these are ideas that we've internally talked about, but I don't have all the solutions. But, I mean, we have a great relationship with our district attorney's office as well. And I do think they work very hard to try and seek justice for those victims, too, but...
It's a tough balance between, you know, you want to, you want to solve those crimes and enforce the law, but then also we've got to then maintain their, their rights and their dignity. So that's a, that's a challenge. So, thanks.
Thank you for your report. And he asked all the questions.
Thanks, Erin. I do think it's important that the public understand what goes into policing and what it costs and that kind of thing because it is a large, large, large part of our property taxes. And, you know, I always say to people, well, your budget's pretty much personnel. And so if you really want me to cut the police budget, I'm going to have to cut people on the street and officers, you know, overall. And I don't think anyone wants that. So just, you know, do everything you can to make it more efficient and good luck.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none? We'll go on to Visit Manhattan's second quarter update. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Marsha Roselle, Director of Visit Manhattan. You all know that our mission is to expand the local economy, excuse me, the local, yeah, the local economy by attracting visitors. That means that we're not just promoting Manhattan as a great place to visit, which it is. We're driving dollars into our hotels, our restaurants, our shops, our venues and our local attractions. Every visitor who chooses Manhattan for a weekend getaway, a family vacation, a conference or a sporting event contributes directly to the economic health of our community. Tourism is a powerful economic engine. When we bring people to Manhattan, we're creating jobs, supporting small businesses and generating local tax revenue that benefits every resident. Our mission is focused, intentional, measurable, and we are committed to ensuring that our work makes a lasting impression for the people who live, work and play here. We keep this mission at the center of everything we do. Since January, more than 1.5 million visitors have come to Manhattan. This number isn't just impressive, it's impactful. At Visit Manhattan, we collect data and analyze it so that we can report to you on trends, track growth and demonstrate the real value of tourism in the community. These, these numbers help us tell the story of how visitors contribute to that economy. And they guide our decision-making with marketing, partnerships and future planning. Every one of those 1.5 million visits represents a potential hotel stay, a meal at a local restaurant, a ticket to an event. And these are memories made in Manhattan. Each month, we provide the community metrics to you. These reports highlight key data points that show how tourism performs in real time. These monthly snapshots help all of us understand the broader impact of our collective efforts. And it reinforces that tourism isn't just about a big event. It's about consistent, measurable growth that supports our community throughout the year. We believe, excuse me, we believe in transparency and accountability. And this is one way to ensure that everyone stays connected to the progress we're making together. While visitor numbers and community impact are critical, these CBB metrics reflect the work happening behind the scenes to make it possible. From marketing campaigns, media outreach, media and sports bookings, social media engagements and website performance, these numbers tell the story of how hard our team at Visit Manhattan is working every day to attract, inspire and support visitors. It's a reminder that tourism success doesn't just happen. It's strategic consistency and a lot of collaboration. And we're proud of the momentum we continue to build. Our hotel occupancy is right in line with where we were at in 2024, which is a relief and a strong indicator of the stability of visitor economics. I wasn't sure this would be the case at the beginning of the year. This is where we are year to date. And by the way, it includes July, or June, which wasn't in your packet, but it came since last Tuesday. And the revenue, 15.7 million in hotel revenue means 1.2 million in the TGT collection so far. Short-term rentals continue to increase in revenue and available listings. 3.6 million in revenue adds 270,000 in the TGT collection.
Is that, so that's, that's not beds, that's just listings, right? So that could be anything from a couch to a house?
Correct.
Okay.
And that number is per month, not year to date from, from January to June. So in the month of June, there was 343 available listings. A house, an apartment, one room and a couch.
Okay.
Our team has already booked 172 bookings this year, which puts us well on the pace to match or even exceed last year's record total of 280. This kind of momentum speaks volumes. It reflects not only the strength of Manhattan as a destination, but the dedication of a dynamic, hardworking team. They're out there building relationships, pitching opportunities and delivering results. Their efforts ensure that Manhattan stays competitive, visible and valuable to planners across the region. I'd like to thank Jen Alley, Lauren Chard and Julie Val de Paris for all their hard work. For the second quarter, you can see that meetings held and meetings booked have been increased, thanks to Jen. A big part of what we do at Visit Manhattan happens behind the scenes. Supporting the local planners, connecting them to local resources and creating experiences that turn good events into great ones. Here's some examples from just this quarter. Here's some examples from just this quarter. We worked closely with the North Central Region Association of Assessing Officers who were here in June. We secured their conference hotel and overflow rooms, coordinated a site visit at the Shamrock Zone for their off-site reception, helped make their golfing tournament at Colbert Hills happen and even set them up for the Museum of Art and Light for a, their conference needs. For the Kansas Museum Association, we assisted with all of Kansas's, or excuse me, all of Manhattan's KMA partners as they're gonna co-host their conference here in the future by securing hotel and venue bids and suggesting potential tours that they can experience while in town. And Interhab, returning in October, they came back because of the success they had here in 2024. This year, we're not only helping to have hotel and venues, but we've also helped to coordinate their creative Interhab Bucks, a program which helps attendees dine out locally with vouchers paid by Interhab. It's a win for both the attendees and our restaurants. These are just a few examples of how hard our team rolls up their sleeves not just to book the events, but to build the relationships, solve the problems and leave a lasting positive impression of Manhattan. Sports continues to be a strong driver of tourism in Manhattan thanks to Lauren. From youth tournaments to collegiate competitions, the events we've hosted and the ones booked for the future bring thousands of athletes, families and fans to our community. In the second quarter, the Bill Snyder Highway Half once again raced to the front of the pack, drawing around 1,700 runners and host, and holding the spot as Manhattan's top sporting event in this quarter based on numbers. We're proud that Manhattan is recognized as a trusted host for sporting events and we're committed to strengthening that reputation, which is why we engaged in a sports tourism study. To build on our success and to plan for the future, we knew that it was time to take a deeper look. That's why we engaged with Huddle Up Group on a competitive sports tourism study. To evaluate where we stand today and identify growth potential and creating a strategic plan forward, John Schmider, the founder of Huddle Up Group, brought Vince Trinidad on board as they previously worked together at the Tulsa Sports Commission. Their shared experience in sports tourism and strategic planning continues to shape impactful destination strategies nationwide. This study gave us insight into the needs to, to elevate Manhattan's position as a competitive and sustainable sports tourism destination. They have the Sports Tourism Index, which is their analytical tool designed to measure the current effectiveness and future potential of Manhattan. There's three core areas, the destination strength, opportunities and competitive analysis, as well as four critical measurement areas, facilities, destination strength, organizational structure and events. Together, these components provide a comprehensive and standard assessment to help us strategically plan and enhance sports tourism. And this is where we scored. The VM stands for Visit Manhattan. Under fac, under facilities, I think we can all agree that when we include K-State facilities, we outpace our peers. In the other buckets, destination strength, organizational structure and events, we have work to be, to be done. Based on the market potential index within a 30-minute radius, this is a list of sports represent, represented that the most, are the most strategic ones for us to focus on. And we have this data for 30 minutes, 60, 120 and 300 minutes. And obviously, we're, we're interested in drawing from more than 30 minutes away because we want them to spend the night. Any sports above that 100, 100 MPI indicates a level of local interest and engagement in the sport and should be considered, considered a sport to focus on. These are the key themes that emerged from the study. So sports tourism is a significant driver of economic development. The regional competition is intense. If you, if, you know, it's, we have to differentiate and choose our market position in Kansas. It is very hard to pull people two hours out of Kansas City. That goes to number three, the geol, the geographic location presents that challenge. We do not pull 360 degrees like Kansas City does because we have less teams that can come from the east, excuse me, from the west and the northwest. Uh, four, there's a desire for that right-sized tournament capacity, meaning sports planners have a set number of courts, fields or spaces they need to hold a tournament. Opportunities to invest in and enhance sports facility, both for residents and to attract tourism-driving events is, is one of the themes that came out. Ongoing collaboration with stakeholders remains essential. Reinforcing partnerships to support long-term planning and shared success. These themes will serve as a foundational guidepost as we move forward with these initiatives. And these are the primary recommendations that the Huddle Up Group suggested. So one was to expand the Visit Manhattan team. Now, this could be a dedicated staff member who would serve as an onsite liaison for sports tourism, visible at all the sporting events and acting as a boots-on-the-ground, backpack-on, key point person. Two, to engage stakeholders. It is suggested that we create an advisory board of key stakeholders to guide and support tourism, sports tourism initiatives. The board's specific purpose and structure will be defined collaboratively, ensuring alignment with community goals and strategic priorities. Three, enhance sports marketing efforts. Continue to, continue to strengthen and redefine, redefine our sports marketing strategies, which this has already been underway, to increase that visibility, attract events and promote Manhattan as a premier sports destination. Huddle Up Group's secondary recommendations are included here. That first one, a new facility. And I'll emphasize if and when a new multipurpose facility is built, that it be built right-sized for tournaments in mind. Two, we need to enhance existing venues. For example, Seaco Park is gonna be amazing. A baseball tournament will need more than just those four fields. They'll go back to Twin Oaks, which the restrooms need improvement. We lost state, state softball because of the amenities at Twin Oaks. Number three, Huddle Up Group suggests a regional facility master plan. Further discussion will be needed around developing a regional plan, recognizing a well-known challenge of coordinating across multiple jurisdictions. Whatever the challenge is, collaboration is essential and our collective success depends on it. This is a list of the people that have, are now serving on the Sports Tourism Implementation Committee. They are a dedicated group of community leaders. Each brings a shared passion for sports and we've already begun meeting and will meet again on Monday. Their charge is to thoroughly assess the findings of this study and deliver a strategic recommendation to Visit Manhattan regarding the most effective path forward. I sincerely want to thank our steering committee members, of which Doug is here from the Dream Car Museum, for their continued support and leadership. Their broader guidance and commitment to Manhattan tourism remains invaluable. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I appreciate the narrative that you provided explaining overall trends rather than looking at each cell in the spreadsheets. I imagine we all scoured those as we were preparing for tonight's meeting. So, thank you and I, I was pleased looking at this to see indeed quite a bit of, of growth and improvement just in these two quarters. So, thank you.
To nitpick a little bit. The transient guest tax revenue, occupancy, average, oh well, average daily rate is constant across the year, but number of visitors is also constant. Why is that?
And are you talking on the community metrics?
Yeah.
Part of that is probably, so we utilize the Placer platform to look at that. And it is not truly into, I mean, you can look at it month to month, but because it's such vast numbers, it fluctuates. I mean, and, and so you'll see, they, they can't drill down in it to be exact.
Okay, that makes sense. I don't know. I, I, I want to ask about short-term rentals and its impact on the housing market, but I think that might just be a different, different conversation.
I'm happy to provide information that you need on those, but yes, that's not my wheelhouse.
It does make me jump a little bit that we went from 300 to 343 listings. Cause I'm sure more than a few of those are entire houses.
And I will also tell you Commissioner that it fluctuates month to month of what's available, right? I think I've said that before from this, from this pulpit, is that, you know, in, in football season, they're all on and turned on available. Now, you'd have to book them months, years in advance.
Right.
But yeah, we, I'm happy to, to dig into any of that data. That's why we have that data that we can provide to you.
Marsha, are you able to track duration of stay? So for example, I, I'm aware of someone who owns a home. It's a single individual and he leases out a room in his house. But for long-term and people who are grad students or long-term visitors to the community. So in effect, he's providing some of that housing that Commissioner Opelt is concerned about.
Well, I guess it, it kind of depends on, I mean, cause they're using the true like Airbnb and VRBOs and stuff like that. So those are, I think, less than 30 days to be considered.
They can be longer, but I, I mean, just like with the hotel, transient guest tax is only if they're under 30 days. I believe the same thing is for short-term rental rentals, transient guest tax, it has to be under 30 days. So, but I certainly can check into that and get back to you tomorrow.
But that is an interesting.
Well, he does advertise on.
VBRo, Airbnb.
Interesting. Um, but yeah, that, that's an interesting thought that I hadn't really, you know, considered as like maybe some of these are, you know, we've got an extra bedroom, let's rent it out to a student kind of thing. With this sport tourism index, what's, do they mention much of a return on investment for this? My thought is, we do have to prioritize our efforts.
Absolutely.
Um, for, esp, even, even just for you, for tourism, um, you know, and where would you prioritize where you want to grow most? Eh, you know, between sports and arts and things like that, where do you think we have the best potential?
We have the best potential in our relationships that are here in the community. And there's a lot of talk and discussion that needs to happen with all of those relationships, whether it's K-State, whether it's Riley County, whether it's the school district. You know, all of us should come to the table and work these things out for the betterment of Manhattan. So, you know, I don't have a magic wand. But, you know, I think there's definitely some low-hanging fruit that we need to tackle right away and we already, already talking about that. And then there's some long-term strategic stuff that, you know, where can we invest so that ROI, that return on investment is as, as, as good as it can get.
Right.
You know, I'll give you some off-the-top-of-my-head suggestions, you know, lacrosse, it's a big deal in St. Louis. I don't know of a single lacrosse player here in Manhattan, right? So that wouldn't be an area that I would say, oh, nobody else in Kansas is doing it, let's do lacrosse because you gotta draw people in and you have to have that planner that's got that passion. So that would be one I'd say we shouldn't consider. But pickleball, you know, that's the fastest-growing sport. I think Erin Stewart says it all the time. Fastest-growing sport. Should we be doing something different? Can we do something different that would get more people? And again, great for our residents, we've got some great facilities here for our residents. How are we getting outside teams to come in and spend that one night, overnight, weekend playing pickleball? I'm sure there's people in this room that have gone traveling to play pickleball. So, you know, how do we invest in that? And we just need to look at it.
Yeah. And it's like, you know, I, 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 you know, with events and, and uh facilities, I think that like we could spend a ton of money if we're spending that money to make us middle of the pack.
Right.
Right? Are we even really gonna be that competitive with that much investment? And that's kind of what I was getting at, but, um, thank you.
I think that, that I thought the Huddle Group, and I thought that was a really good report and I hope you all got it. Cause I asked Marsha to send it to you. I thought they had a list of return on your investment. You know, with fishing at the beginning and that was one of their pages.
They did.
That was very interesting. And I've said several times, I think we really need to have a discussion. There are things, sports activities that we have to subsidize if we're gonna have them. And indoor water is definitely one of them. You're not gonna make money on indoor water. But is that important enough to our community?
Right.
And we also have to balance what we can bring people in to do and what the people in Manhattan want to do, you know. So we don't want to build, but the one I'd love to see is another Frisbee. Nine holes at Warner Park.
A disc golf course is really cheap.
Yep, there really are.
But is that different than Frisbee that's on this list because they are?
No, it's, it's, it's all playing with a circular throwing apparatus.
Cause Frisbee is a trademarked name and they are different sports.
Sure, just like basketball, right? You can have three-on-three, you can have, you can have horse, you can have so many different aspects of playing that sport of basketball. Same thing with Frisbee, disco, disc golf.
That makes me question the validity of this entire report, Marsha.
Marsha, have you, on the primary recommendations, have, we haven't started implementation of those?
No, I mean, we've, we've dug into them and we formed that committee so that they would also look into this, read every page, look at every piece of data point and talk about, you know, where do we do that investment?
Thank you. Also, did you want to include Erin's crime stats in some of your?
I would like to give a shout-out and thank you to Erin and her co-officers. In 17 days, you might be aware, we have a festival that's happening out at Tuttle Creek State Park and they have been at the table doing things to make sure that that's a safe environment for our, our community and the fans that come, so.
It's in Pot County.
It, it's, it's right on the line. We include both RCPD and Potawatomi Sheriff's Office. So we were out there today, so.
One last thing, is the COVID hangover over?
I, I would say yes, Commissioner. You know, we saw the drop, the dip in 20, 21, 22. 23 was a banner year. I think everybody just came back full-on and that's been our high mark, high watermark since then, which is why 24 and 25 have kind of leveled out. So I would say yes.
That kind of represented the planners kind of back to doing what they used to do and all that.
And, and they're doing less of the hybrid stuff, right? We did, we, we learned how to pivot during COVID and we did do some hybrid meetings. And I don't think that, I think everybody likes that back face-to-face.
So, good, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Please come up.
So this is a bit impromptu.
Can we get your name and address, please?
Sure, Erin Drogado and I'm proud to say, uh, 2807 Lakewood Drive, just purchased a home in Manan. I'm officially a citizen. After 30 years of not being here, now I'm back. Executive Director of the Museum of Art and Light. And I just want to say thanks to Marsha, Jason, uh, and everybody in here who helped support that activity because we are thriving and, and gaining ground as, as many of you know.
Could we just add that you are part of the Kansas program that goes until April, August 2nd?
We are. Sunflower Summer, yes, and we are seeing record numbers.
And a child can get in.
For, for, uh, well.
It's free. I got in this afternoon.
Yeah, well, thank, great, Peter. It, depending upon the institution, uh, yes, but free for all institutions in the state of Kansas pays in, yes. So, um, I just wanted to comment and add to Marsha and, and all the activity. First of all, I sit on the advisory board for the Visit Manhattan and I think it's a, it's wonderful what, what Manhattan's doing for tourism. I mean, in a small town like ours. We opened in November of 2024. As many of you know, we had been gearing up uh in, in order for that to happen three years prior and the incubation time before that was another two years. So by the time we opened, there was a lot of activity going on and thought into it. And we were global before we were local. into it. And we were global before we were local. We pushed PR out into the global art community. We were, we were in ArtNet, Forbes, all of these places, literally not only putting us on the map, but Manhattan as well. And I think it's important to note that, you know, now we're really hitting the ground running, not even a year old, and we are welcoming all in our community. We're, and we're doing a lot. But I've been all around the world talking about Manhattan primarily. Yes, I represent the Museum of Art and Light and that's the reason for all of these conversations. But why Kansas is the question I get. Why Manhattan, Kansas specifically, is the question I get as to why we put our physical location here. Many of you know, you know, the founders have a business here and, and that's where the roots started. You know, I'm from here, born at Irwin Army Hospital. But I think, you know, my, my, my cute answer is, well, why not? But my second answer is always, why should have the coast, why should the coast have so much fun? You know, we, we need culture, arts and culture in our communities. And so, what I would like to relay are a few economic stats for you on arts and culture. And I think, Peter, you're.
Quickly, you've got seventeen seconds.
Sorry. Two will be, each job created by the museum sector results in sixteen thousand four hundred and ninety-five in additional tax revenue. This is from the American Alliance Museums and you can check my, and more than five dollars in tax revenue for every one dollar we receive in funding from all levels of government.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Send it to us.
Will do.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll go on to item C, LK Town Homes Project Discussion. There's no action required on this, we're just going to discuss.
There is no action. And before Community Development Director Peterson comes up with her presentation, I just wanted to real quickly run through our workforce housing sales tax numbers. So, the proposal that you'll see tonight is going to use our workforce housing sales tax. This is a portion of the economic development sales tax that we have, that's half a cent. So, seventy percent of that half cent goes towards debt for public infrastructure. And then the twenty percent of that goes for job creation, recruitment efforts, retention efforts for economic development. And then ten percent of that goes for workforce housing initiatives. So, we projected, so that sales tax went into effect in twenty twenty-three, it extends through twenty thirty-two. We have projected that we will collect approximately eight million dollars with that to put towards workforce housing initiatives. So far through June, we have collected about one point eight million dollars. We have committed a hundred and seventy-four, or we have spent a hundred and seventy-four thousand, that was for Carlson Plaza. And then we've made other commitments, that totaled about five hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So, our available balance that we actually have in the bank is one point one million. But then the continued anticipated revenue that we're anticipating for the remainder of twenty twenty-five and through twenty thirty-two is about seven point two million dollars that we can use towards workforce housing initiatives. So, just wanted to give a quick run-through of those numbers before we launch into this presentation. Are there any questions?
Are we, I mean, I guess, so we are clearly outpacing that eight million dollar projection. Are we planning to adjust that at any time throughout the life of the sales tax?
You know, we always try to be very conservative with our estimates, just in case something does happen. We do see a downturn in the economy, but of course, we will continue to monitor those numbers. Ten percent of that sales tax, no matter what that percentage is, is going to be dedicated to workforce housing initiatives. So, I think probably as we start heading into those, you know, years, seven, eight, we'll start having conversations about if we need to start picking up our initiatives and where we can find opportunities if there's more revenue in that fund.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Stephanie is going to join us.
Good evening, Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. The topic we have for you this evening is, we're calling it Manhattan Infill Housing. And we'll go over the three sites that are included with this incentive request. First, to just give a little bit of background of where we've been for all three of the different sites. The LK Town Homes, it was recently before you for an RHID and the amount of one point nine five million. That was vetoed, so that will not move forward. There was going to be a subsequent request to you all. It was actually part of the resolution in December that we sent to the Department of Commerce for what's called the Parkside Project. This is right here on the east side of the park on Eleventh Street. That was going to be a five hundred thousand dollar, just shy of five, a five hundred thousand dollar RHID request. And then the, the Lemel Village site, there at the bottom, that was a project that we've been working on for many years now. There were lots that were owned by the city. In twenty twenty-four, the commission approved a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant for the development of that site. It's incredibly challenging, there's a lot of grading that goes into it, some public infrastructure that needs to be improved, and then private utility extensions. So, that's what that grant was for. At the same time, a sales tax exemption was granted for that project. If the proposal that's before you this evening moves forward, that sales tax exemption would be closed out, it would not be utilized. So, that's just a note. But those three projects together are leveraging about just shy of two million dollars from the state, a grant through the Moderate Income Housing Fund, which, Tyler Holloman's here this evening, he can speak a little bit further to this, but we are hearing from KHRC, the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, that they will have one more round of MIH and then it's done for right now. So, this is really an opportunity to utilize what would be our first, our first grant through MIH. And then the Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credit, the developers that is not, the city's not involved in that one, it's about one point two million. A quick project overview for you all, and then both Gavin Schmidt and Tyler Holloman can get into further details if you have questions on those projects. The proposal this evening would create forty housing units. All of those units would be three-bedroom, two-baths. That's kind of more in line with what the commission thought they would receive with the last workforce housing sales tax projects that came in. Twenty-six of those would be on the Little Kitten site. Eight of those would be Lemel Village as part of this project. But then there's an additional four units at Lemel Village that will be constructed, not included in this forty, that will be at market rate. They're going to be a little outside of that workforce range because they have basements that are involved because of the grading of those sites. And then there would be six units at Parkside. You can see there the breakdown between for-sale and rental. All of the units, all of the forty units would be within the hundred and twenty percent area median income threshold, how we define workforce housing. So, the request that's before you is a one point four or five million dollar grant from the Workforce Housing Sales Tax Fund. It would generate, or the, the units would be, if you look at that request, about thirty-six thousand dollars per unit would come from the workforce housing sales tax. And then you can see there, we broke that down for a per-bedroom calculation. And then for a comparison, the sub-bullet below that, the last two are the only two workforce housing sales tax projects that the commission heard last month. Those were fourteen thousand and sixteen thousand per bedroom. So, this is a little bit more efficient per bedroom as far as dollars go. As far, so when we look at that grant and how we would reimburse the developer for their, their product, fifty percent of that, thirty-six thousand dollars per unit would come when there is a foundation and footings and that's been inspected by risk reduction and approved. And then the remaining fifty percent would come at a certificate of occupancy. And then the developers proposing to kind of stretch the, the implementation or the, the construction of these units out over three years. So, twenty units would be created in that first year and then ten, ten units in both years two and in three. The request continuing, there, the developers are seeking a property tax abatement for the eighteen rental units. And that approximate value is still pending a cost-benefit analysis. If the commission gives direction this evening to proceed, that cost-benefit analysis or financial analysis would be completed by a third party and then brought to you when you consider that tax abatement. And then a sales tax exemption for the eighteen rental units as well, and you can see an approximate value there. Again, the sales tax exemption that was previously approved for Lemel Village, that would go away. Just a couple of notes as far as our policies go, and then this would also apply to the IRB policy. First, for workforce housing sales tax, the proposal that's before you is not within the identified application time periods of April and October for a private development. It would also, this proposal would exceed the current twenty-five thousand dollar cap we have per unit. However, your policy states that the commission retains full discretion to basically use the workforce housing funds as you see fit.
Stephanie, would part of the recommend, I mean, I know we talked about this last time, how we could exceed that. Do we need to just relook at updating that policy?
So, this evening, what you could do is, because the policy allows you to have that full discretion, you can just acknowledge that you're, that the request is not in line with that policy, but you're comfortable with moving forward.
And Stephanie, I assume that the ramping up of the application rather than waiting till October is to maintain hold of the state funds.
Correct.
And to build on the momentum that was part of this project previously.
Yes, yes, correct. That, that needs to move forward. The MIH, the state is waiting for us, for this request.
Does proceeding outside of the two time periods that we had identified create an undue burden for your office?
No.
I think this, I have a question probably for the five of us. Would we still have an October application period if we go forward with this?
I mean, I think that'd be related to available funds as well. I, I mean, that's what I think would be the determining factor. We could still have it because I think if there's progress and people are interested.
Plus, these, this reimbursement is going to be spread out over a three-year period, at least.
Mm-hmm.
With.
Yeah.
The way it's structured, with some of it being upon the initial completion of the foundation and then subsequently a certificate of occupation.
Okay. I think, I would like to discuss some other things after this, for part of the, as part of this agenda item, but yeah.
And just for, for your knowledge, we are looking at probably September to come back before you all with an update on some housing stats, what you've awarded to date, and an analysis of that, as well as some recommendations on the workforce housing policy now that we've gone through one round. And so, some of that, we could look for feedback of, of what you would like to see as well. The other thing as far as policies goes that I wanted to point out, the IRB abatement policy of, for, or it's an IRB policy included within that is the property tax abatement. We do have that identified incentive zone, which is really kind of around Aggieville downtown. And this, the two sites that are identified here would be outside of that zone. Again, that policy says the same thing, that the commission has the discretion to use, to, to use that tool as you see fit. This would be a, for the workforce housing sales tax, this would be a performance-based grant, as well as for the, for the abatement. So, for the for-sale units, those would be at a, within our workforce range. Right now, that is three hundred and sixty, three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars max. And for the rental, we would mirror what we just did for the seven sixteen Morrow Agreement for that property tax abatement and workforce housing sales tax, where we would have a minimum investment that has to be made in the project, and then also a minimum number of units within that workforce range. Another thing to note here is that KHRC, because this would be part of an MIH grant, that they will monitor the unit price for up to, or four or five years. That's both the for-sale and the rental. And then for the rentals, those that are included in that abatement, those would be actually monitored by the city for ten years. They'd have to provide that documentation for that period of time.
Is that KHRC for the entire project?
All forty units.
Forty, okay.
Yep. So, just a summary, and then if, if you have questions for me, that's great. If not, we can have Gavin and Tyler come up and I can hang out right here in case there is something else that comes up. But previously, what was requested was for thirty-two units and the mechanism was going to be two RHIDs for a total of two point five million dollars. The current request would produce forty units with a workforce housing sales tax grant of one point four or five million, and then an IRB property tax abatement and sales tax exemption for eighteen of those units. Are there any questions? Is there anything you want me to go back and provide further elaboration on?
Stephanie, do we, do we have to include all three in a vote or can we vote on them separately?
I will let Tyler and Gavin talk about the MIH grant. There have to be forty units and these are the three sites that have been identified. So, if one of them isn't included, that just creates a challenge for delivering those forty units.
Stephanie, I don't know if this is numbers we have to have tonight since we're not taking action, but just based on the twenty units in year one, ten in year two and three, could we see the annual math on that one?
Yep.
Or projected annual math, what that disper, dispersment would be?
Yes.
Do the develop, well, I guess I can ask them, but I'll throw the question out. Do the developers have an idea of, of that first twenty, how many would be rental properties? How many would be for-sale properties?
I'll let them answer that, I'm not sure.
Do we know the deadlines for the KHRC grants? Like, what, what kind of a timeline are we working on before that money is lost?
Tyler can speak. So, the city applied for this, but really, it's kind of a pass-through to the developer. So, I think that Tyler or Gavin could better speak to the conversations they're having with KHRC. My understanding from a meeting that we had last week with the developer is KHRC is, is willing to wait for us to decide if we're moving forward with this incentive package or not. But the, they're wanting to get that agreement in play.
Okay.
I don't know if there's a strict deadline. I'll defer to, to Gavin or Tyler.
Thank you, Stephanie.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, good evening. My name's Tyler Holloman. I'm here with Gavin Schmidt to give you an update on our Manhattan Infill Housing Initiative. Stephanie did, I think, a great job at detailing the request that is before you tonight. We've prepared some slides that we're going to go over that just drill down into even more detail. But before we get into that, what we thought we would do to start is just kind of zoom out a little bit and take a look at this full project because it is a, a large project. We recognize there's a lot of moving parts. So, from the start, the goal of this project has always been to deliver high-impact, affordable workforce homes in infill locations across our community. Again, as Stephanie mentioned, we do have a total of forty-four homes as, as part of this project. You've heard the number forty thrown around a lot. There's forty of these that are dedicated for workforce housing. It is right at a fifteen million dollar investment, which we believe is a substantial investment into workforce housing inventory here in our community. A couple of community firsts that we wanted to highlight, you know, the, the biggest one being, we believe that this is, or we know this is the first workforce housing for-sale proposal that has come before you. I, I think the city manager did a great job or summarized some of the, the expenses that have been approved, either for Lytec or for other rental units, but this would be the first for-sale project that you have considered. Additionally, this is the community's first moderate-income housing grant and the first ever Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credit allocation for Manhattan. And then again, as the name implies, this is an infill project. We have three infill locations. Another important note is that no sites currently have or will have any special assessments as part of this project. You've seen this map before. This is the three geographic sites across the community, zooming in slightly. Here's the, the three sites. Keep in mind, these are just conceptual renderings, but we're trying to show that we are planning to deliver a, a range of product types, but all in, in a larger three-bed, two-bath minimum configuration. First site is the Lemel Village Duplexes, which until recently was a city-owned site. Again, all three-bedroom, two-bath units. We have eight for-sale workforce homes planned for that site. And then that site also has four market-rate homes. The second site you've heard a lot about recently is the LK Town Home site. Again, all three-bedroom, two-bath units. There are twenty-six homes planned for that site. And currently, we have a There are 26 homes planned for that site. And currently, we have a breakdown of 12 rental and 14 for-sale homes at that location. And then the third site is the Park Site. We're actually considering incorporating some four-bedroom units, but at a minimum, those would all be three-bedroom, two-bath units, and there would be six rental townhomes at that location. Again, a significant component and a unique component to this project is the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation funding. Obviously, we are leveraging a significant amount of state funding for this project by way of a $650,000 moderate-income housing grant. And a KHITC or Housing Investor Tax Credit allocation of 1.2 million. I was actually able to serve on the Housing Market Analysis Steering Committee, and one of the goals that, one of the direct goals that came out of that report was to leverage state funding. So we're proud to be able to do that through this project. Again, it does provide additional oversight. So every household, whether it is a renter household or a for-sale household, will have to be both income-qualified and residency requirements met. So they can't be game-day buyers. They can't be, you know, out-of-town buyers, part-time buyers, that sort of stuff. And then additionally, there's a significant economic impact, of course, by importing close to $2 million in state housing funds that goes beyond the $2 million project allocation by creating construction jobs, generating sales tax, and activating vacant land. The purpose of this slide was just kind of to show you guys where we've been and how we got to where we're at today. This has been a a long project with a lot of twists and turns. And it actually started in 2023 when the city issued an RFP for city-owned land at LeMille Village. Frontier responded to that specifically to help design a product that would work for the site with the goal of having that be a workforce housing product. In early 2024, Gavin and I started working together and assembled two additional sites, the the LK Site and the Park Site. We were able to put both of those under contract and we began working on plans for and strategizing for a KHRC application. Throughout the year, we worked on a pretty significant rezoning and replating process for multiple sites, just to ensure that all sites are permit-ready. In February of this year, KHRC announced their funding decisions. Manhattan was one of 15 communities that received the statewide funding resources through KHRC. Highly competitive funds. At that point, we were very excited and really we were gearing up towards a fall construction start. We had a lot of momentum behind the project. We had a lot of support behind the project. But unfortunately, in June of this year, one of the three taxing jurisdictions with veto powers over the RHID exercised their right to veto the RHID. Which essentially took the RHID off the table, not just for that site, but for the second site, which which put the financial stack for the for the project in jeopardy. Since then, so during, really over the last 30 days, we have scrambled to secure the contracts that we have because we still have two sites that are under contract. So we've worked with the sellers to extend those contracts. We have had quite a few conversations with KHRC. Commissioner Opel, one of your questions was was what that deadline is, and I'm happy to get get into that a little bit, but we have bought a little bit of time here. They would like to see the city executing an MIH agreement soon. That was already, we've already are past that due date. But we told them that we're coming tonight with with this conversation. And then additionally, we've significantly reworked the budget, looking for different funding tools that we can use to to still make this project a reality, which is what brings us to where we are tonight.
Good evening, commissioners. Thanks, thanks again for having us and and sharing this information. I I think Tyler did a nice job explaining the project as a whole. This project's been broken up for various reasons a couple of different times, so kind of bringing it together, I think, just helps clarify a little bit. So I think he did a nice job, nice job on the timeline as well. I'm going to spend the next few minutes just going over some of the numbers and kind of getting into the the path that we were going down with the RHID. I don't want to dwell on it too much, but I think it's important to kind of compare and contrast the funding mechanisms we were using to get the project completed. And then we'll go into the budget and I'll show you where the funding gap currently exists. So the first slide here is just the project comparison. First, we're going to look at the the previous path that we were going down. So we had an RHID proposal. The unit mix is going to be 28 for-sale units. There's going to be 12 for-rent units. So there's going to be the 40 workforce housing units that still exist today. The total request was approximately $2.5 million, paid out over 15 years. So we've outlined here that the net present value of that, and I don't want to go too far in the weeds with that, but what we're trying to do with the net present value is kind of level-set these two proposals together. That way you can kind of compare apples to apples. And you're not trying to kind of extrapolate from here. So net present value of that payment stream over 15 years is 1.5 million dollars in today's terms. There was an IRB that was approved for eight units, as Stephanie previously mentioned. And then how does that, how did that proposal perform? So there was 12 units over at LeMille Village that we had discussed that would hit the tax rolls immediately as soon as they were issued CO. Those 12 units were going to perform with about $68,000 per year in property tax increment within the 36 months of build time. That's over all three taxing jurisdictions. So the total property tax generated over the 15-year period of that RHID was going to be $815,000. That was the first 15 years that that, this proposal of the 40 workforce houses was going to perform. Today, we're looking at a workforce housing sales tax proposal. The unit mix is slightly changed. Still 40 units. As you can see, we basically moved six for-sale units to four-rent units. We're really excited about that. Tyler, he he owns Frontier Property Management. His firm manages about 800 homes across the region. And time and time again, the data shows that this 1,500-ish square foot new construction home just doesn't really exist on the market. I'm not saying there's zero, but there's very few. So whether it's a family that's needing to move up from a two-bedroom apartment, whether it's a soldier coming in from a different community, there's a lot of folks that want that infill product, a new construction product or something similar to new construction, and it just doesn't exist. The way the funding mechanisms work, we were excited to be able to increase that just a little bit and make this more of a, almost a 50-50 split. So currently have a 22-for-sale, 18-for-rent proposal. The request is 1.45 million dollars over a three-year period. So there's a 36-month build period. So over three years, the net present value ends up being about 1.25 million. We've used the same discount rate for those who who like numbers between the net present value. So that that is consistent. We're seeking an IRB sales tax and property tax abatement on the 18 rental units. And again, how this, how this program will perform, we're estimating there's going to be $150,000 a year in property tax increment within 36 months. So you can kind of see the difference between the 68,000 to the 150,000. Where that delta lies is there's an extra 14 units that are going to be coming on that are for-sale and hit the tax rolls. So the proposal on the left, there is 12 units that were going to be taxable right away that were hitting the market. There's going to be 26 here. So 14 additional units is going to provide the additional property tax increment. It's going to hit tax rolls for all three taxing jurisdictions. What that looks like when you extrapolate for 15 years, 1.8 million dollars in property tax received by the three taxing jurisdictions compared to the $815,000 on the other proposal. Next is a project financial breakdown. And this slide could be called, you know, where's the gap or why are we here? So the total workforce project cost is 14.5 million dollars. That's for 40 homes. If you want to break that down on a per-unit basis, you're looking at about $360,000 per unit. We have received KHRC funding. This is, you know, obviously something that we've been very proud of. That number represents what those credits look like after we dispose of them. So when you have these tax credits, you end up disposing of those, and there's a small haircut that you take when you sell those tax credits. So this is the net effect of what we receive from KHRC, 1.768. So the remaining project cost is $12,732,000. This is what it'll cost to deliver these units, net estate credits. As mentioned, we plan to sell 22 units. Our target price point is $318,000 per unit. We have a 5% sales commission that we've netted out of here. So you have 6.6 million dollars in proceeds after you sell those 22 units. Leaving a remaining project cost. So basically, I'm taking the 12.7 million. I'm subtracting that when we sell the 22 units. There's $6 million that we still have to fund. We have private funding of 4.28 million dollars. What is private funding? Private funding is Tyler and I's capital. That's bank loans, and that's private investors. That's that's the amount of money that we have secured in private funding. So $6 million less the private funding secured leaves a funding gap of 1.8 million dollars. That's the gap, and that's why we're here today. The 1.45 million dollars in workforce sales tax grant plus a sales tax exemption gets us to cover this funding gap and allows this project to move forward immediately.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Where's the rental revenue coming?
The rental revenue?
Yeah.
That is going to be, that's what will service a majority of that private funding debt. So 4.8 million dollars, a big chunk of that is a loan.
Okay.
That will then service those payments. So the rentals will service that debt service.
For about how long?
25 years.
Oh, wow.
So we're stretching those loans as far as we can go to allow for the debt service to be as low as possible. So we have the smallest amount of funding gap possible, the least impact.
What's your rent, what's your rate, your rental rate going to be on those?
1950 is where we're capped at, and that's per KHRC requirements. There's an AMI level that we have to cap at no more than 1950. It's per bedroom is what that's based on, but we're monitored by KHRC on that.
How you make money on that, though? Because like, I mean, at six or six and a half percent, a 30-year, or I guess a 25-year loan at $300,000, and you're saying it's over 300,000. That payment's over $200,000. So like
Yeah.
Okay. So that's where this funding gap is coming from, is what you're saying?
That is exactly right. So, you know, if 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 interest rates were two and a half or 3%, the funding gap would be much smaller. You could have more debt and you could pay with less service, but where interest rates are at today. And obviously, we can't project where they're going. That's why the gap exists where it is today. Good questions. So just briefly, some grant details and overview. We've gone through a lot of this, won't beliger these points, but these are larger units. There there's a reason that these types of units don't get built without some sort of a funding gap. It's just, it's really hard to do. These are going to be 1,500 square feet. There's going to be a lot of bedrooms. It's a big impact on the community. Construction costs continue to go up. Even when Tyler and I looked at budgets from when we initially proposed in December to where they're at today, those costs continue to rise. And that's why there is no single-family new construction starts in this price range within city limits, within Riley County. It just, it's it's really difficult. Infill development, it's challenging to deliver, and frankly, it it is a little bit more expensive than maybe a greenfield development, at least on the front end. But but I think we're all aware of, i- if you can have infill housing, you strain community services less. People are driving on the same roads. You're really taking advantage of a lot of the public infrastructure that exists, and you don't have to duplicate that. That's sometimes hidden. You don't see that number always upfront, but you have to take that into consideration. We're proud to say that this this request is within the workforce housing sales tax policy of 10% or less of the project cost. And then number five, it it may be the most important to some people. This particular request does not impact the general fund as far as grant dollars coming in. This is a dedicated fund for workforce housing, and that's what we plan to utilize. You know, local benefits, obviously, the 40 workforce homes with a minimum, minimum of 120 bedrooms that'll be added to the community. Again, one of the projects we're considering, maybe even doing a four-bedroom, if if we can make those numbers work. This price point's just not being delivered in Riley County right now. Obviously, there are a lot of local benefits to employers and schools and other agencies. You guys have seen the letters and you guys have seen some of the slides of the local support from primary employers. We have more primary employers coming to town, thankfully, with PTMW. Those folks need places to live, and they need homes to live that they can come in and and raise family and grow their families. So we're excited for that. We're going to be held accountable. KHRC is going to be monitoring these units. All households are required to meet AMI guidelines. We have to report those numbers and send those into the state. They have to be verified. And then there is a residency restriction. Tyler briefly mentioned it, but I'll say it again. Game-day buyers can't come in. We, they wouldn't be allowed to buy these units. You have to live here. You have to be working here, paying taxes here, be a citizen of Manhattan. And then finally, you know, 26 units are coming on the tax rolls. I say immediately, it's going to take, you know, obviously 36 months to build those out, hopefully shorter. That is one note. We've kind of stated 20 homes the first year, then 10, then 10. We very much want to get this done faster. If if market demand exists and these things are moving like we hope they are, we fully hope and anticipate to build out 20 and 20 if we can. But we want to provide ourselves just a little bit of space. If if things, if we have to adjust, if things aren't selling the way we want to, the last thing I think any community member wants to do is see a bunch of empty homes. So that's why we have that grace, but we're fully committed to delivering these homes just as soon as we possibly can. And then finally, this is why we're here today. So KHRC funding is secured, but we do have to deliver all 40 units. Site control is approved, contracts pending. Those contracts, the sellers have been gracious enough to extend. We've been communicating with them, as Tyler said, quite frequently. They're ready for these contracts to close and and to be done. So they are secured. The last two items, the workforce housing sales tax grant, which is $36,000 a unit or $12,000 a bedroom, and the IRB request is really what we're here before you today to ask for feedback, to ask for your opinion if this is something you want to progress with. We've been working on this for quite some time. We think it's very impactful. We're excited for it, but but we would like some real feedback tonight, if possible, on direction. So thank you.
Questions, thoughts?
I mean, I think from thoughts, not necessarily questions. I've been supportive of the project. I appreciate you guys pivoting so quickly to get us something. And something that that financially works out, I think, a little bit better. It is unfortunate that the RHID was declined because now we're using workforce housing sales tax dollars in in a way that we weren't intend, not a way, in a project we didn't think we'd have to, which is limiting the future project. So that's not a frustration with you guys. That's a frustration at the the veto that came about. But I do appreciate this. I think Gavin, the project comparison slide was really, really helpful. And I I like the expedited timeline because we need to get things going and moving. So I don't, I don't have any questions. I just want to voice that.
I I would agree, although I I do want to underscore that the whole purpose of the sales tax is to support workforce housing. And I appreciate what you just said in terms of trying to accelerate the project if it is at all possible, weather permits and all that kind of stuff. So I just want to underscore that this is not a new tax, that this is the purpose of this tax that was authorized several years ago. And to your point about perhaps not having as much for future projects, this is getting housing into the market now. We know that we are going to have a major employer coming by the end of the year. We know that another potentially large employer will be here within about three or four years. I have heard intimations that somebody, another company may be in the wings. And so, you know, I think getting this kind of housing out there quickly is a good use of these funds.
Oh, I I absolutely agree. It's a good use of the fund. I think my comment was just frustration that we lost a tool that we had to make it happen and are having to draw on something that we hoped could supplement addition, you know, other things as well. But I agree with you on that, Susan. One comment that I have more for Stephanie. I do like that we're discussing a per-bedroom amount on workforce housing sales tax. I think the previous policy just has it as a per-unit. So I do like that per-bedroom calculation. I think that helps us gear toward, Peter's going to say the opposite of
Well, no, I don't, I don't hate it, but we might want to look at the marginal cost of bedrooms. As we've heard that most of your over, or most of your cost is in that that living area and first bedroom and second and third bedrooms are marginally cheaper to build. Is that, would you agree with that, to you?
Yeah, I mean, I would say that the marginal cost would go down if you add another bedroom.
Yeah. So we we might not want to make it like a flat.
Maybe like if this, this, and then
Yeah, some kind of consideration anyways, but yes.
The rent correlation on the bedroom, though, I would just add, is not, just because you're doing three bedrooms, the marginal cost might go up, but your rent does not go up three times.
Right.
Yeah, I pretty much agree with what's already been said, and I support the project. I would just reiterate something I've said before, as we've reviewed these things, when people look at them, we get a lot of criticism because they say, at least, this is what you do to bring jobs into town, not for rentals or not for housing. But we started this whole housing project because we said to grow economically, we need people, and we need to get people, we need places for them to live. And so that's why we passed the sales tax, and that's why we looked into RHID. So I think when people are looking through that old paradigm, they're saying, you're not supposed to do this for housing. It's like, no, we kind of decided upfront, we were going to do this for housing. I also share the frustration on not getting the RHID because that was something we really wanted to do, something past commissions. An administration was really criticized for not utilizing in the past. And then once we finally got there, we got shot down. And so obviously, we're going to have to use some of our sales tax money that we could have saved for some other projects. we're gonna have to use some of our sales tax money that we could've saved for some other projects, had that not happened. And also, that's probably gonna really put a damper on any new RHIDs coming forward, because who's gonna wanna bother to, uh, do it if it's just gonna get shot down? Which again, will put more pressure on our, uh, sales tax fund. I also really like it, cause it's infill, as you've already said, we've got the utilities, everything is right there. And I think as far as city administration, because of these other grants and their monitoring, that really helps us out, cause we don't have to sit there and do the administration, um, for it, so, anyway.
John, can I point out, I appreciate that you said, "we" got shot down on the RHID, cause it does feel like we've been in this, and I think there's such community support that it, I know it was your guys' project, but we do, we were all invested in it. So, I, I think your use of the term "we" was very appropriate.
School board did, everybody, uh, uh, did.
Um, John, I would just like, I'm gonna, I know I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but, um, there are a lot of people in our community who don't appreciate that certain funds are designated for certain uses. And when you say that, um, by, if we allocate these funds tonight, other projects may not get funded, I just wanna clarify that that refers to other housing projects.
Right, e- exactly.
Doesn't refer to streets, doesn't refer to parks.
No, that is a good point, and, and actually, one thing that I was thinking about and I didn't say is, you know, we looked at what our burn rate is and how much money that we're gonna have and everything else. Actually, except for the fact that something could happen, we couldn't collect all the money. It would be great if all the money was committed right now, cause it means we'd have all these projects in the works and, and, uh, going. And is, is the burn rates going, any other developers out there, you better get here quick, if you wanna get it before it's all gone.
Um, Danielle, have we solved the legal problems with Parkside?
Uh, we have a hearing on, um, August sixth, and we will know, uh, where we are headed after that.
Yeah, I, I really am concerned with the, trying to shoehorn three bedroom apartments into that space on, across from the park. I mean, it will totally change the nature of the, of the neighborhood, and I'm not sure I can support that. I support the other two, but, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have some questions. Um, well, not a lot, um, okay, so, uh, the cost. Um, so in the Exhibit C from your, uh, development plan in the RHID project, or pro, application, um, you've got the cost per unit for year one, twenty, two hundred and sixty-three, year two, two sixty-eight, two seventy-four, two seventy-nine, two eighty-five. Is that missing some, some factor or some component of those costs?
I, yeah, I think if Stephanie could pull that up, um, we, so, we've tried to be very, very transparent through this whole process, and so, the numbers that we've used, we actually pulled directly from the, uh, approved development plan. And that was actually submitted in, as Gavin mentioned, in December, those numbers.
It's on page twenty-seven.
I don't even see where my pages are.
This is Steve's report. Do we have the development?
Uh, no, it's on, it's on there, you just passed it.
Oh, did I?
Yeah, it's twenty-seven. Uh... Go up one more, right there, you gotta zoom in, it's, it's tiny. There you go.
Peter, what, which column are you looking?
Um, okay, so, under, under the dates, it says cost, and then under the year num, or the number of units.
Okay, and this is Steve's.
Okay, so, between, like, between each color, there's, you might wanna zoom in.
I, I see what you're saying, right, right to the right of costs?
Yeah.
I can't speak to where Steve got those, so this, this is a report not that we made.
Okay.
This is actually a report that, uh, our third, or not our, the third party analysis, uh, gentleman Steve Robb made. And I will have to get clarification, cause those aren't, those aren't our numbers, I guess that's, I don't know if those were Steve's numbers from, from some other document.
Okay.
Would those be, I'm just guessing, potential building costs, like, um?
Only building.
Like material, I don't know if that's material, uh, I mean, cause I think we all know that there's more than material costs.
That might exactly be right, cause he had to do a per year sales tax calculation on construction materials.
We will, we will follow up on making that right now, Peter, and I'll get, I'll email Steve and ask him where those nu, where that number came from, cause those aren't ours.
Okay, um, yeah, cause like, that was kinda causing me, cause, you know, when you talk about like eight, what, eight point oh eight million or eight point eight million, like, when you add up those costs, it's only like seven point one, and even when you include the, the interest payments that are further down, it's only like seven point three, so it's like, okay, we're missing a million and a half dollars here somewhere. It's gotta be missing some kinda component, um, I just, I really want us to be clear about, and consistent.
Yeah.
Um, I think that, that, from what I heard from the county, that was some of the criticism, some of the numbers seem to not be consistent or lined up, but, um, I think that's important, that, that we're consistent with this. Um, so, what do you, is there a contingency in place if the zoning does not, uh, go through?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I was just, I was comparing the, the RHID, um, process, uh, cause, yeah.
That's, and that's a great point, and that, uh, we will definitely get clarification on that. I just wanted to pull up the development agreement budget, cause that was, that was what we were originally tying back to that four and a half, or fourteen and a half, but, um, it, in regards to the six, I mean, we, we, I don't know how much we can, can speak, uh, regarding that site. We would be much more concerned if it was twenty-six total units that were in question. Obviously, we have pivoted and been over backwards and turned and twisted, and you, we, we tried to do everything we can to keep this project on track. We will continue to, to do that, um, but at this time, we're hopeful and, uh, believe that all, all forty of the current workforce housing sites that are proposed will be able to, to be advanced.
Okay.
Uh, it does look like that two sixty-three number pulled over for new construction.
It was just the construction cost.
Just the construction, and there's land acquisition, and site prep.
All the.
Soft costs and contingency.
Okay, that, that's what I figure, I just had to ask.
Yeah, that's great.
Um, okay. That was kinda, those were kind of it, uh, my big questions, um. Yeah, I mean, so, Tyler, I know you, you kinda started with this Lee Mill Heights thing. Um, did this just, like, and I don't think you started that project with the intention of going this big, right? Like, uh, can you kinda maybe talk through some of that and?
That's a, that's a great question. So, um, Frontier has been very successful using KHRC funding in other communities. It's always been a goal of ours to do a workforce housing development right here in Manhattan, where we're headquartered. Um, and, and one of the things, when we started those initial conversations on the Lee Mill Village site, I actually went and, um, it's somewhat depressing to see how long ago it was, but I went and pulled the original RFP, um, and, and moderate income housing was specifically mentioned by the city. So it was always a thought, um, that we would want to include that site, um, in, in a workforce housing application. As we continue to have a really good dialogue with KHRC, uh, you know, KHRC said, hey, this, you know, this moderate income housing program has been expanded to include Manhattan. Originally, it was just for rural communities, and our, uh, state legislators, you know, saw the success of the program and expanded it specifically so that communities like Manhattan could use it. And so in those early conversations with KHRC, when I said, hey, we're, we're starting to think about this application for Manhattan, it was actually their encouragement that we go bigger. Um, and, and part of that was to make it as compelling and as competitive as possible for KHRC, cause if they're looking at a community of five thousand people that brings a, a five unit project, that's, you know, equivalent to a community of our size bringing a, a forty unit project, so we wanted to have that comparison. Um, and about that time too, we, we started really doing a deep dive into the housing market analysis, and realizing, you know, there, there is a demand for these units, they're not really being developed. Um, and, and back to the rental point, which Gavin brought up, um, you know, we consistently, through Frontier Property Management, have to turn people away that are not, they don't want a apartment. You know, we have a lot of people that come to us that, they're like, hey, we're not students, we don't want an apartment, we don't wanna fixer upper home that we have to buy, we wanna move into something, turn key, and that product is very, very hard, it, it exists, it's very, very hard to find because they fill so quickly. Um, so I don't, that was a long-winded way of saying that, that's kinda how the, the Lee Mill Village site got expanded, uh, but initially was, was really at the, at the request of KHRC.
Okay. Um, I guess my other, my last question is, just to discuss, is like, you know, we do have this protection for five years. What is our, as a body, desire to try, do we have a desire to try and implement any kind of longer protection? Um, maybe not necessarily for this project, but is that something that we wanna start discussing? Uh, how, how we continue to ensure that these homes that we invest in to be affordable workforce housing stay in that range? Some may argue we shouldn't be doing that, but also, that same people would probably argue we shouldn't be having this conversation at all.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah.
In specifics to this one, we would be looking at, if we were doing something, Peter, cause the, the rentals, if we do the property tax abatement, the city has to certify those for ten years.
Yeah.
And so it's the other twenty-two that have a five-year built-in protection. So just talking about the following.
Yeah, so it's like, the, the initial sale and maybe one other if they move out.
Yeah.
Um, I, I would say, we do have a very transient community, but most people, if they're coming here and they know they're only gonna be here for two years, are probably gonna rent. Um, or they'll buy with the intent of making it an income property, which we can have that other dis, uh, another discussion about that later, um.
I think, in my opinion, this is when we go back to discussions we've had about, um, land trusts, about deed restrictions. Um, I don't know if that's a decision to be made right now, tonight.
Yeah, and I, I've asked about, I've talked with, with Tyler about it, I talked with Danielle about it, and I don't know the timeline of what it takes to put something into a land trust. I get that we're working kind of on a tight timeline for this KHRC money, and, like, I would hate for that to go away because we didn't make a decision. Um, so that's, that's really kind of in my mind, it's not a sunk cost at this point. Um, I, I'm not gonna, I, I fully recognize all of the work that you all have done, current, like, already up to this point. Um, I'm trying not to take that into account, because, uh, I, I'm an economist at heart, so, uh, I have to ignore those sunk costs, but, the, that KHRC money is, is an opportunity cost, um, and it is, it's significant. So I think we, that's, that's an important conversation, is that timeline that we're on.
Peter, in, in relation to your question, I'd say I'm, I'm somewhat on the fence on a, on a deed restriction situation. I think that, um, most individuals buying those homes, I, I don't think it's the intention, I guess in my mind, and maybe I'm a little too naive on it, it wouldn't be their intention of let me buy it, hold on to it to just flip it and make a whole lot. I get it could be, I, I also understand things go up and get more expensive, and I, and I want them to maintain the homes and, and continue to invest in them and be able to maintain that property value as it goes up.
Yeah.
But I also understand the protecting of the investment, I think from a deed restriction standpoint, I don't feel like I would have enough information to even try to have a discussion on it.
Yeah.
Re, in, in relation to this project at all. I think that's a really big discussion and talk about what those options are, what it really means, what about when they're investing, all of, I mean, there's a lot to it, but.
I think we are gonna have some of that discussion in September, but our.
Yeah, and I think that we would then need to, whatever decision it would be, would have to be probably pretty forward-facing, like, future, just because also if we do the application round in October, and if we're changing some of those stipulations, I think that would be difficult for people who are coming to us with projects already. Um, so I think if we, when we have that discussion in September, any of those decisions, to me, should be forecasted pretty far into the future, since it hasn't been a part of what we've been putting out there so far.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just, yeah, in answering.
Uh, hearing no questions?
Well, uh, just one more thing I wanted to point out, sorry, I, I think a lot about this stuff. Um, and like, kind of, this, this really kinda made me start completely over, which I think is some, what we should do, because it is essentially a new application. Um, so, you're asking for roughly, um, one eighth of the workforce housing sales tax dollars, roughly. Um, so, and we're getting forty homes out of it, um, ignoring the, the projects that we've already committed to, um, but we're getting forty homes out of it. If we were to be able to do this with the rest of the workforce salesing sales tax dollars, it'd be about three hundred and fifty homes. Um... I guess, i- is, is that something that we feel would be successful? And I think, like, personally, that sounds like, that's a pretty good number. Like, hey, we passed this sales tax, it's a very small percentage of the sales tax, and we were able to spur the development of three hundred and fifty workforce homes. Uh, that may be an overestimation, but, uh...
That's, what, ten percent of what the housing study indicated was necessary, wasn't it four thousand units?
Yeah, and we, you know, we're not gonna solve the housing study with the sales tax, but we can certainly show, show some progress.
I have, sorry, I'm gonna, um, so I did this calculation back in twenty twenty-three, based on, uh, funding that KH, KHRC had awarded at that time. Um, they awarded ninety million dollars in various sources, and they created five hundred and thirteen units.
Oh wow.
So, when you talk about three hundred and fifty units for eight million dollars, if we compare that to, and again, this was back in twenty twenty-three, if we compare that to what KHRC is looking at, I would say we're getting a heck of a deal on producing housing.
And I, I mean, I think it goes to what Susan said, like, if we can get things in quicker and get housing, I think you said that, Susan, like, getting housing in quicker is, is better for us, and then hoping that the more housing we get in spurs even more development, um, when we're adding stock, so. But I do think, Peter, that's a really valid discussion to have, and we've kinda talked about that, is how far are we getting with the sales tax?
Yeah, what do we consider successful with it? Um, so, and I mean, assuming all of the figures in Gavin's comparison hold, um, we're essentially transferring one point four or five million dollars from the sales tax fund and getting one point eight million dollars in property tax revenue, um, while also incentivizing some development. Um, so, you know, i- it's, it's a, it's not perfect, but it's still pretty good. But, let's make sure we're consistent with our numbers.
Okay, thank you Gavin, thank you Tyler. Are there any comments from the public on this issue?
Uh, Andrew Vaughn Lintil, two twenty-five, Four Winds Court. I still have questions, I mean, I think this is better than what we, we're doing. Um, but, I just think that, um, using the dedicated sales tax for housing, that's, you know, it's for housing, I think that makes more sense. If the problem becomes, like, if this becomes wildly successful, then we should probably just add, you know, more sales tax, do another, do an extension or whatever, um, to increase it. Infill is gonna be extremely hard to, to, I mean, the number of houses that we're talking about, to do infill for this, this amount of housing, I think's gonna be super difficult. Um, I would much rather go somewhere, find some farmland and start somewhere else, and I mean, there's very limited places on where we can do that, but that's where I would be, um, looking for. Um, my other, my question, so, you mean, you're talking about the capital appreciation of the houses, so if I buy something at Little Kitten, can I sell it for a profit? Um, yeah, that's, that's a big question, for sure. How long is KHRC controlling these properties? So it's by just five years? And, so I mean, I don't know, it's not, not very long, so, it's just kinda my, my quick thoughts. Um, and then, so rents would be the same thing, it would just be five years that, or ten years, based on the situation?
Rents is ten years, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, I mean, I think it's, I think it's progress, um, thank you.
Sign in, sign in, thank you. Anyone else wish to make a comment?
Uh, Craig Laupi, thirty-eight, twenty-one, Silverleaf Drive. Uh, one, I'd love to see these projects go through, full support of homes being built in our community. Um, I'm also in full support of them having a rental side of this. I will piggyback off him, I own a property management company, there's need for this type of homes in this community. There's a shortage, rent prices are driving up quite high, um, and them keeping them at nineteen fifty, uh, they're gonna be below market value. Um, so I do think that's a good. So I do think that's a good thing as well. We have an imbalance in the sales market. Building houses in this is also I would support because there's an imbalance in this price point. You can go out to Pot County, get them for 320 to 340, but not in the city of Manhattan or Riley County where all of us are paying taxes right now and there's not a lot of extra homes going in to protect that continued increase in middle levee. So full support of having stuff on the tax roll. To support their numbers, I also build houses. And since March, from March to July, when I got a bill from my HVAC, because of tariffs, that bill was three grand more. So they are going to continue to have appreciation occur on that and their costs are going to continue to increase as they go through each year after year. So from March to three grand on a $270,000 house in Womigo. So keep that in mind. And I will advocate for keeping the open April and October, even if you give them these funds. I think it's important for other developers in our community to follow the rules and stick to the rules that you've set as precedence. I understand why they're doing it in this situation, but I do have some concerns that if you go outside of this too much, it could create a wild frenzy of this coming in at any point, anytime, having this occur. Thank you.
Thank you. Sign in, please, Craig.
Good evening, Josh Brewer, Habitat for Humanity of the Northern Flynn Hills. Our office is at 514 Pillsbury Drive. Mayor McCullough Commissioners, thank you for your continued support for housing in our community. At Habitat for Humanity, our advocacy agenda is centered on increasing affordable homeownership supply, ensuring equitable homeownership access, and improving homeownership resilience. As a former member of the Workforce Housing Steering Committee, and it's really cool to see several of our steering committee members here tonight, so we're still very much engaged in this. We define workforce housing as housing that is affordable to the between 60 and 120% of the area median income or between $54,000 and $108,000 per year based on median household income of $90,000 for a family of four. In the housing market analysis, the 20 year demand for this buyer segment was projected at 510 for purchase units and 440 rental units costing between $120,000 and $250,000 for purchase and $850 and $1850 for rent. High-income demand was also projected at 280 units starting at $300,000. While this project, under consideration tonight, is not affordable to most of our community, the housing system is complex and interconnected. The supply of housing that is affordable to upper-income households has not, in practical terms, created value for lower-income households. That's a theoretical concept called filtration or trickle-down housing. It's not been observed in practice. But it does provide a wealth-building opportunity to those households who can access the housing and an economic return for the community more broadly. Due to this applicant's successful efforts in securing tax credits and Modern Income Housing Award, this project will represent an outside investment in our community's housing system and will create opportunities for those in the building trades. These are positive outcomes. The amount of subsidy requested and the narrow band of affordability should give us pause. It gives me pause. When we started discussing public subsidies for private development, nonprofit and for-profit, I was commonly reminded of a subsidized project in Norview that had appreciated beyond its original affordability. This was oftentimes held against us in our discussion of why we should get public subsidies in in housing supply. We see the same scenario play out in homes that Habitat for Humanity built with deep subsidies throughout the 1990s and early 2000s. In these cases, we were missing a tool to retain subsidized equity beyond the initial sale. As subsidized, as the subsidized, subsidization became greater and the market appreciated faster and faster, this became a more pressing issue for us. Today, thanks to the work of many community members, we delivered on the housing market analysis call for a shared equity program in the community. We call it the Good Steward Community Land Trust. If we start subsidizing projects without stewardship subsidies, we will lose the marginal affordability. Almost done.
Thank you.
We will lose the marginal affordability gained in this supply and most importantly, will risk the public trust and housing incentives more broadly. I hope that our community may find a way to move forward with this project and other projects like it in ways that broadens and preserves the many opportunities for affordable homeownership.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Sign in, please. Any other comments?
Good evening, Mel Boers, 1918 Humboldt Street. And I do agree with Josh's comments about his concerns about the affordability that will result from the this proposal. I, as you know, am concerned about one of the sites, the East Park Neighborhood Site. It's very destructive to a historic and stable neighborhood. It goes against the land use plan for neighborhood stability regarding scale and density. It goes in in orientation as well. It goes against the housing study recommendation to utilizing existing housing stock in our traditional neighborhoods. It does not appear to be providing affordable housing. In fact, it takes out six units of affordable housing. It it compromises greatly damages the future of the neighborhood as far as being a historic neighborhood and most of the houses in that neighborhood have been identified as being contributors to a historic neighborhood. And that's the first step to developing that neighborhood as a historic neighborhood. But when we voted for this housing tax to help with affordable housing and to expand the stock of housing, I had no thought that it would actually be so damaging to these existing neighborhoods. Not only for the residents that live in these neighborhoods and can afford to live in these neighborhoods, but to people that visit our community and these neighborhoods are part of the identity of Manhattan. There's a better idea for utilizing the housing stock and that land in in the older neighborhood, and that is to become a historic district there. This would benefit all owners of the property by providing 60% tax credits that do not rely on any local taxes. Not the housing tax or sales tax or local property tax. This is state and federal tax tax credits. And even if they're not needed by the owners of the properties, they can be redeemed for about 90% by local banking and insurance institutions that really like to buy these up to support the community. And these are ongoing. This isn't just a one-time next year, next five, next 10 years. These are ongoing. 60% of qualified improvements for these properties, which can be run the gamut of anything that's approved by the zoning and and our local Historic Resources Board, since we are a certified local government. So I.
Thank you, Mel.
Conclude this and I.
Don't forget to sign in.
I will take any questions if you'd like.
Are there any other individuals who'd like to make?
Good evening, Donna Shankham, 1922 Leavenworth Street. I've heard a lot of discussion about what we should be thinking about in September as the October deadline for the next run of these. And now, in working session, we're not voting, but where we're compiling all of the concerns that we have about how this policy has been implemented so far, is a good time to think about the real meaning of workforce housing. I learned it when I was invited by FAR, I think that's the Flint Hills Association of Realtors, to a smart development workshop about five years ago. And in this workshop, they said that workforce housing is really addressing proximity to the work site and alignment with workers' wages. The implications of that are that we really should be looking at workers' cost burden when they're earning salaries and they aren't the beneficiaries of investments. The people in the 60 to 120% really suffer greatly and are bound, as we heard, to suffer even more in the near future with the increased cost of living. So we should think as we prepare for sort of a pow-wow in September, how we can improve access to housing for the lower end of the spectrum of 60 to 120%, particularly those with children. We should look particularly at the data that we have from USD 383 on children who are unhoused and where they're living. We should be looking at the location of schools and their surroundings at the existing housing stock that might need rehabs. We need to be looking at incentives for using these tax dollars to take houses that have been sitting there vacant for a long time, find out what's going on with those. There there is affordable rehab that we could be spending money on as well. And most of all, I want us to use September as an opportunity to have sort of a mini seminar on shared equity, which includes limited equity cooperatives, which have been wildly successful on Allen Road, might be a time to visit that as a go-between between rental, which is unstable, not guaranteed, and CLTs, another form of shared equity. So I look forward to talking to everybody more about that and learning more. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none. I think we'll take a 10-minute break. Is that okay with everybody?
Do we, do we need a full 10 minutes, or do you think we could get away with five?
We can get away with five.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Rush. We are back in order, folks. Last thing on our agenda is Park and Rec Strategic Plan Updates, Aquatics Survey, and SICO Partnerships. And we have Aaron Stewart to present.
You got 10 minutes, Aaron. It might take me that long to find the. I got lucky. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is the second quarter report for Move MHK. So I'm going to kind of catch you up because we didn't do a first quarter, but to start out, everything we do is under our mission and values, and so this is leading us off. Creating a healthy community through people, places, and programs. And we have our core values of diversity, fiscal responsibility, integrity, innovation, and service. And what you'll notice throughout the presentation is we actually align our goals with these values. And so, again, last year, we adopted the plan, June 18th. And it was the long-term vision, kind of this 10 to 20-year comprehensive plan for Parks and Recreation. We set four primary goals, and I'll go through those in a minute. We wanted to make sure that we're aligning these goals with the plan as we go through our work every year. One thing you'll hear is about how much we spend on these plans, and so it's a lot of money to spend to set on a shelf. So this is a way to ensure that we're annually updating this plan, but also we're doing quarterly check-ins. So that's kind of the purpose behind this. So the four goals, enhance the level of quality in parks, focus on the quality improvements that consider future needs and growth, enhance delivery of programs and services, and enhance the operational efficiency and financial health of the department. So this is strictly cut right out of the plan. So goal number one. So we had four bullet points here. Expand the use of technology and sustainable innovations, or initiatives, excuse me. So we are continuing to work on automated mowers. And in fact, there's a, I call it a grant here, it's actually a reimbursement of a little over $117,000. We plan on having that on the August 5th agenda to order 23 units that will be outfitting several parks. So, and that's through that grant. The SICO Ballpark, if you've driven by, you've seen that there's a lot of work going on. They continue to remain on schedule, looking for the ballfields of spring of '26 and the tennis courts fall of '26. So everything's going well so far despite the rain doing its best efforts to throw a hamper in that.
We already got grass growing in there in the outfield.
Yeah, that's not grass. And we will, the grass that's coming in is on a sod truck, so. So that, we'll have to kill all that before we lay that down. We have put out proposals for the naming and sponsorships. We've received several. We are currently working out an agreement to bring to you for the entire complex naming. So hopefully be more to come on that very shortly. Flint Hills Bread Basket, as you are well aware, that they have moved locations, and we are transitioning that facility into indoor batting cages. It'll also house our concessions warehouse. So right now, our park staff is in there doing a little work to set that up for both cages and the warehouse section. And it's got a built-in fridge and freezer, which makes it perfect for concessions warehouse for us. So we anticipate ideally opening those operations in October. The cemetery master plan, we presented that to the commission on May twelfth. We've kind of tabled that till after the budget season, and we'll revisit that in the fall. Goal number two, focus on the quality improvements and the future.
You are working on the culvert. Thank you very much.
Yes, actually, that's a great, I did skip that bullet point.
That's a very important bullet point.
Yeah, it's just, just under fifty thousand to complete that culvert, and it should be done here in August.
Super.
So goal two. Indoor aquatics, obviously, we're gonna present a little more onto that tonight, but we're working on the draft survey and would ideally have something finalized and back to you for your approval, August, September-ish. Under utilized facilities, you may remember, we signed an agreement with the MAC to utilize what's the building in City Park, we call CPAC, which there's a picture of it right there, the old staff building, as some of the people that have been around here know it as. We're putting in a kiln room, which requires electrical upgrades, you know, some new, a new sink with clay trap, and they plan on running pottery classes this fall. So ideally, we're looking forward to starting that partnership this fall. Enhance the delivery of programs and services, program planning and evaluation. So as you're well aware, we passed cost recovery in December. We continue to work on those workbooks. To be quite honest, when we hit the second quarter, things slowed down quite a bit for us because it is our busiest season. So not a lot of progress was made on the second quarter, but ideally, we'll be progressing those later in the third and fourth quarter to finalize those out. The biggest thing they're waiting on is the indirect costs to be added, and then we can align the pricing with not only the market conditions, but what we think the community will bear. Expand and innovate program offerings. We've had a lot of these with the move of the skate park. We've had a lot of interest in that. So we had Go Skate Day. We're working on skate lessons. We've got the Wildlife Warriors and the Junior Zookeeper that was reestablished at the zoo this year. Working in adult kickball in this winter cornhole next year from on the recreation side. Middle school sports leagues continue to expand. We participated seventh and eighth graders, which is your hardest group to program for. We continued baseball and softball through the Big Six League this year. And we had teams from, I think, Walmigo and St. George, maybe a few others. But we provided four of those teams for that league. So it worked out very well for all involved. Moving our my first leagues to the DCC so we can expand our offerings there. And then our educational outreach, which is the Spark Program through the Discovery Center, which was a cooperative through schools that brought field trips into the Discovery Center here in early spring, and we look to continue that. Staff education and development, again, being our busy time. And we launched this little thing as a city called the Oracle Financial System. So we've been working hard to get our staff trained on that. And because one isn't enough, we also launched the All Funeral Services on July one to mirror that. And that's for the cemetery. That's up and running. And again, that, that one wasn't actually great. There were many delays. That, that one was approved last year, and it took a while to get that thing going. So zoo staff development, working with partners zoos for cross-training, trying to fill in some of the educational gaps that we have with our own keeper staff with some of the experts in the field. So revised scholarship program. This is probably one, and you'll notice these from the snapshot we did a report on earlier. This has really taken off. Thirty-two thousand dollars in the second quarter, forty-eight thousand dollars on the year. Twenty twenty-four was six thousand. The average assistance level is up to seventy-seven percent. And you can kind of see our highest percentage back in twenty nineteen was forty-seven percent. Removing that household gap made a huge difference. The, we have basically sixty people on a hundred percent scholarship. So these are people that never would have used us. Just the qualifications it takes to make it to that level, it's pretty significant. So you can see the bar chart in the middle, twenty twenty-five dollars spent versus twenty nineteen is significantly higher. More program counts, too. Thirty-seven programs so far this year compared to seventeen last year. We had, did have seven new ones in this quarter compared to the first quarter. So this is just a look at kind of the assistance level, and I know that's a lot on one sheet, but it just kind of shows you the range of percentage by program of what's being covered. Day camp is one of the big ones over there. Pool passes remain to be big. And when you look at the dollar amounts, pool passes, water park season passes did edge it out, a little over sixteen thousand dollars with day camp, just over twelve thousand. Goal number four, operational, or enhance the operational efficiency and financial health of the department. Again, we're working to implement the fee resolution and cost recovery. Some of those things we outlined when we adopted the cost recovery resolution. The aquatics fees were implemented on May twenty-fifth, May of twenty twenty-five when we opened. We've seen an increase through June of forty thousand eight hundred dollars. We are also closed, we were closed six days this year compared to last year. Had we been open, based on the average rate, we'd be closer to seventy thousand. So pretty significant help there. Sunset Zoo seeing an increase of fifteen-seven with the Discovery Center at just under six thousand. Rec Center fees were implemented on July one, so we'll have that first report kind of in the third quarter.
How's the pool, like, num, like raw numbers of users? Has that gone down or is it just, is it safe, steady?
It's down because we were closed for six days.
Right, okay.
We're maintaining or improving our average. And certainly, and programming is, is up there. So we'll have a full kind of aquatics report here in the fall. That'll kind of highlight that out. But as far as daily admissions, like memberships and paid fees, paid dailies, I think we are, at the end of June, we're seven thousand behind. But again, you can pretty much point that back towards those six days. In particular, Memorial Day. If that, that was kind of cold and rainy, and that, that usually is our biggest weekend for the entire season. So if it's hot and warm, we're gonna have a lot of people that first weekend. If not, then we struggle a little bit.
Last Sunday, had a closed SICO. Was that just because, was it too hot for people to go to the pool or was it just?
Nobody was there. I mean, because we were in and out of storms all day.
Yeah.
It was rainy.
Okay.
Nobody was there.
Okay.
So we lit, we literally closed two hours early because nobody's at the pool.
Okay.
So and we're getting in, you're gonna, we're not quite there, but you're gonna see that start dipping off, especially as we get into August, which is why we go down to one pool. So. AZA accreditation, we had our inspection in early June and got our preliminary report. We're working on those concerns and reporting back. Our hearing is scheduled for September thirteenth. I have full confidence that we should get that accreditation. So marketing, marketing and promotion, if, hopefully, you've seen them, our Five Minute Fridays, that we continue to work on and develop and hopefully connect with our community on, obviously, our activity guide. And we're starting to do some long-range content planning for media outlets. So continuing with goal four, enhance operational efficiency and effectiveness. So our systems improvement, and what you see there is a picture of our peri-weather system. So if you're ever around Annenberg Park or City Park, and you hear this weird noise go off, and there's a storm around, that's our lightning detection system. So it really simplifies and allows people to get in and out with proper warning. It goes off when it's within ten miles. So it's a good system. We updated Annenberg last year because when I was at a tournament with my child, which was a facilitator, they literally were trying to call Kansas City to determine whether we keep playing or not, and lightning was within that ten-mile radius. So I made it simple, and we put a station out there, and that's, that's just the rule. So mowers, again, we did deploy two others at the, the Ot joint maintenance facility. And then we have digital admissions at the zoo now. The Discovery Center worked on off-site sales, meaning selling their gift store outside of their building. So that was a fun trial run, and we learned a lot from it. And then the program reorganization in recreation, and that's, we've moved some staff around for facilities. And that's on the next one, the interdivisal. Yes.
Sorry, the, the off-site sales, was that at the Flint Hills Festival?
Yes.
So where do things stand with being able to order anything online? Is that still?
They're in progress. They're working on it. Yeah.
Would that include the zoo as well?
I, I think if we can get it to work there, I would like to see us expand that through probably multiple avenues, including the zoo. So the interdivisional collaboration, the facility supervisor reorganization. So we, we had some staff members deport. We reorganized just to make it a little more fluid and efficient and transition some positions, not only to save dollars, but ideally have a better collaborative process with our Parks Department. And Parks has been working really hard with the CPAC and the Bread Basket, working with several divisions to get things done. Concessions. You know, if you've heard a report that they, we started off sluggish, that's pretty inaccurate. If you read the article, I think where they pulled that from was, again, as part of any new business startup, we're trying to refine our efficiencies through understanding what our customers doing, through both the sales, both the attendance at our facilities and our sales trends. We're currently operating primarily right now, we're in our outdoor facilities. And we've added this Snowy Q Pro that I've got pictured there in our concession stands. And I don't know if you know this, but shaved ice is really popular, and it's pretty high profit margin because it's ice and syrup in a cup. And we've done a hundred and twenty thousand in revenues as the end of June. Part of what I was talking about earlier, where I think they pulled that from, is we basically started two months late with, we started in March. The other thing I'll say that I said in the last meeting was there is an untapped market of middle schoolers that if we can figure out how to get the payment gateway right, where they're using Apple Pay because they don't take cards and they don't take, they don't carry cash. I think from three to five every day in two rec centers that we can, we can clean up. So, and they'll eat us out of everything. So I, I would suggest, being the first-year startup, that we're doing very well. Obviously, we do have that anticipated loss from investing in all the equipment. Our staff has done a great job. Janelle and Rachel have done a great job of making this work and continuing to adapt and learn as we go. Since I run over everything, I'm gonna kind of skip that since I was told I have ten minutes, so.
No, it wasn't.
So it's just a summation slide of kind of everything we've talked about. So this has been making a lot of news as well, which is the Riverfront MHK. And so kind of how we envisioned this, and we, we took this to the park board the other day, which we didn't ask for a formal vote because that will actually come at the end of the year. But they, they kind of gave the blessing to add this into the document. And so again, Move MHK being a living document, how we anticipate this working is throughout these quarters, we're doing these reports, we'll wrap up annually, we'll set new goals, and then we'll update the document each year. And so it'll have kind of an appendix. And we can add an amendment. And so this Move MHK Riverfront concept, this concept or visioning plan, I mean, we agree belongs in the document. And so one of the things we can start doing is if we add that as an amendment to the document, then we can start collecting public input on it. And so when we're doing those community surveys, those Parks and Rec surveys every two years, and we start to expose this more, it'll give us some feedback. So direct feedback back to this plan and, and set it into a priority list of what we already have and what you've seen out of the back of the Move MHK document. I know that was quick. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
So just to reiterate, the Riverfront, if it had been a concept two years ago when we were putting the Move MHK plan together, probably could have just been included in that as a, an item that could be included in our list of priorities. And because it took some time, now we have to vote to add it separately. Is that?
Well, I, yes, I mean, I think you would add it, it would be a vote as an addendum.
Right.
Probably scheduled sometime in January. And so I think there, there were kind of two things going on, and I'll point back to Stephanie for this one. The city's comprehensive plan. The, the path there is to point the comprehensive plan to Move MHK for all things Parks and Rec. And so this, being a Parks and Rec plan, putting that into Move MHK makes sense, and it falls under the comprehensive plan, and those should all work together anyways.
And, and, and getting it in M, in Move MHK is really just the first step of very many, many steps to potentially making this a reality, right?
So just like we talk about the concepts for the three parks, City Park, Northeast, Northview Park, that are in Move MHK, this is the same idea. It's got a little more work done to it, a little more development, but it's really still just a vision. And let's just say if we were gonna progress with this, right? We pick a, first of all, we're gonna have to pick a small piece because this is a rather large vision. So you would pick that piece, we would have to go out and get permission to solicit a RFQ, RFP for design build or something like that. We would end up having steering committees and stakeholder meetings, and we'd have to do the full design of what that looks like. And then we would be pushing that forward to, as a project that the commission would need to improve. This is really just to put it into a plan to, to start gathering that feedback and find out where it lands on that priority level.
Sure.
Because there are a couple of things that we can loosely tie to in our existing survey that talk about, and one of them that comes to the top of my head is outdoor recreation water that you would, you would argue that's got some importance in this. And when they talk about outdoor recreation water, they're not just, they're talking about both from a pool's perspective, but also natural water. So I think you, we can tie some things loosely that it makes sense to add it as an addendum, and then we can start to collect kind of some direct feedback on it.
Thanks.
Other thoughts? Are we doing a ser, indoor water survey? Because I think, I'm, I'm not very supportive of that. I think what we need with the complexities we have with our other governing units, I really think we need to find a facilitator to talk to the university, to talk to the county, to talk to the schools, and find out, you know, where they're, where they're going and where they're coming from.
I think Jason gets to be that facilitator.
No, I think we need to find somebody who's not a city employee, county employee.
I, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this because I do think three, three of you saw it at the county, city-county-county meeting last Thursday. We were at the USD three eighty-three meeting last Wednesday as well. Our, our real discussion was last January, at the retreat, the commission provided direction on indoor water. You did want a survey last January, this summer, to talk about locations, talk about financing, talk about tolerances, but you also were looking for community partners. We wanted to take this opportunity to reach out to the county and the school district to see if they were willing to talk about SICO Park, indoor water, and possibly some other facilities that they may have on their radar in terms of just getting feedback and, and responses from the citizens. We have ETC under contract. We are moving through a process with them to put together a survey. And we have a constituency base that is very in-tuned to indoor water in our community and are looking for those next steps by the city. As I mentioned in January, we came out and talked about. Uh, as I mentioned in January, we came out and talked about the survey in the summer. Uh, here we are trying to get that direction on the topic of indoor water. And we thought we would go ahead and broaden that, uh, conversation, uh, with our partners to try to address both of those goals, uh, set in, in January. Uh, we highlighted a lot of our past experiences. We were also trying to figure out what could we partner on? Our community tends to embrace, uh, some of these initiatives when we do partner. And got a lot of head nods from USD three eighty-three Board of Education. Uh, our conversation Thursday, I think was a little bit short. We're going to reach back out to the county, offer to go back down and talk with them about the survey and see if we can't, uh, find common ground. We know that's difficult. There's three, there are five of you, three in the county, seven at the school district, that's fifteen. It's, it's a difficult group to corral, but we do believe, um, CECO may be an opportunity for us to, to focus and, and gain some of that momentum. We obviously have a lot of activities that all three entities participate in. Um, it wasn't that long ago, uh, this Hundred Acre Tract obviously had that partnership, went to the voters on numerous occasions and were successful. Uh, could it be replicated? Uh, that's what we're attempting to do. The ownership of CECO is not well-known. I think there's a lot of perceptions that the city or the school district or the county own the whole thing. Obviously, it's chopped up into three different parts. I always characterize ours as one-sixth of, of CECO. Uh, it's, it may be a little bit bigger than that, but we are obviously programming almost one hundred percent of that area in green with the renovation of our, our ball diamonds. There are options for all three entities, uh, to work together. We obviously have our outdoor pool as part of the Riley County property and they have provided us permission to be there, uh, some many decades ago. Um, and that was part of our conversation even last Thursday. We know indoor water, we know relocation of fairgrounds and rodeos have been around for a while. Uh, we've also been in discussions and looking at USD three eighty-three's capital improvement program. And there are just a number of desires and wishes. And do we have momentum to possibly master plan and look at CECO Park more comprehensively? We talked a lot about January, we talked a lot about city and CECO. Well, as that map indicated, we don't have room at CECO, we would need partners, either USD three eighty-three or the county to do anything at CECO Park. Um, I know we've, we've had some tussles about CECO in terms of even the most recent construction project and we really didn't want to go out and ask the community a question about CECO, about an amenity that would not be on our property. It would be on someone else's. So again, we brought that up Thursday, we're happy to go back down and talk with the county about that option. A lot of study, a lot of in, input and interest in indoor aquatics. Um, city administration just continues to hear from groups. I know you all continue to hear from groups, uh, survey results, a lot of momentum. Yeah, where do we want to go with this and, and when? We would like to bring survey questions to our voters, to our citizens relative to location, uh, financing, uh, how to finance, uh, what it is they would desire, uh, in our community. Uh, if we go at this alone in, in terms of indoor water, uh, it is a large, large project. Um, I think the estimates we received through the, the study were fifty-five to sixty-five million. That is substantial i- in a facility for indoor water, uh, for perspective. Danielle and I were talking, those amounts are pretty much what we have invested in Aggieville or will invest in Aggieville or what we have invested in North Campus Corridor. They are significant. And when we think about other significant events and investments in our community, uh, indoor water would obviously be right up there. Um, there are other things that the community is wrestling with financially in, in terms of county and school district. And there's a number of ways to structure these things financially and trying to get that feedback and input from the citizen is, is what we're after. So we offered to gain some feedback this month. We would look to bring back that draft survey, um, to all three entities if they're interested in reviewing that in August and then try to get this out in September, October. Uh, then obviously look at results and seek further guidance, uh, November and December. So happy to answer any questions, take any input.
I think Jason on the survey, one thing that, um, I don't know that we discussed this in January, but including expectations of use on the survey, did we talk about that? Or Aaron's maybe brought it up?
ETC brought it up, Aaron brought it up too.
Okay, I think it'd be important to put that question on there because I think we need to determine if, if people are thinking this is a facility that won't ever be reserved or won't ever be used by outside entities. And then Marcia's back there saying, no, I've got, you know, groups coming in that want to be able to reserve it. So I would just like that question if we're doing a survey to be included.
Yeah, so there was, there was a question in the existing survey and we were, at least in the initial draft that we've got working right now, it repeats that question, so not only can we see what they're after, but we can see if anything's changed in the past two years.
What's the estimate cost for that survey?
Uh, it's, it, mm, twenty-two, I think is where we finalized it at.
Okay.
Maybe, mm, it may have been less than that, somewhere, right around twenty.
Twenty-five thousand initially.
Uh, that was the limit, uh, and I think it came in under that and part of that was this visits.
We haven't seen a draft of it yet, right? Okay, it said bring back and I was worried that I was.
No, we'll bring it back in August.
Okay, I was just worried we had seen one already and then, okay.
Aaron, what are they looking at for a sample size on this one?
It'd be the same estimated sample size, four hundred statistically valid survey.
See, I'm really frustrated, I don't see the, at this point, asking people, if I get this survey and it says, do I want indoor water, I'm going to say yes. Do I want it at, you know, CECO, I'm going to say yes, or wherever I think I want it. Um, that doesn't necessarily follow that I will then be willing. And even if I say, oh, you know, I'll pay more sales tax. I mean, I think we, we really, we're at a point now, the county's thinking about moving the fairgrounds. The university is talking about all this horse complex and that kind of thing. And I didn't see the university on the, the group of three, you know, I think we need four. And that's why I think we need an individual who can go to each group and find out what the, is that they want and how we can work together. Because we really shouldn't be building this swimming pool without the, this USD three eighty-three for sure. Even Riley, I mean, uh, twenty-two thousand dollars to ask people how they feel without real subjective quantitative answers to me is a waste of money.
Well, I would just reiterate, last January, we were having a real discussion on the location. And there was a debate even amongst the five of you as to where that location would be received by this community. City Park was on the table, it was talked about quite a bit last fall. And there were some pretty strong opinions expressed about that as the location. We don't have the space in CECO. But we were going to go ask that question of the community, was your preference CECO or the city? I think based on the construction schedule and some of the interactions we've had with Riley County, even getting easements for building the outdoor softball and baseball diamonds, we felt like we, we better ask them if we can even entertain asking a CECO question because we don't own the land. And I appreciated, uh, Commissioner Fokie's response the other day. Um, and, and we need to hear from Commissioner McKinley, Commissioner Ford on just whether or not they're comfortable with that. If the five of you are comfortable with the location, perhaps we don't need a survey. But I thought we were going to dive into location, I thought we were going to dive into financing, see where the tolerance was on the tools.
Jason, when we talked about City Park initially, um, there were other places that the group had looked at and I never felt, heard, you know, what the pros and cons were for those. Um, the thing about City Park that, um, we have to get this bond issue passed. And City Park, it won't work, there'll be a, an organized opposition, not just the group that will be organized and against it wherever we put it. Um, of people who just do not want to see that kind of giant building in City Park. It's just, you know, and I'm not, I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying we've got to be pragmatic about this. So, we don't know what the county has planned. We don't know how the, that might intersect or intertwine with, you know, what the university has planned. Um, we need someone who can facilitate and bring everybody to the table and kind of work with people and then not city staff, not county staff, but an individual who's good at building bridges and seeing how, you know, at the moment, um, we kind of have a drawbridge with the county. And anyway, that's, that's how I feel.
Yeah, and I mean, we did discuss this in January and this was what we said we wanted to, to do. I think we do need to get with the county because we don't want to put something out there and have a survey out there and them saying, I don't know what they're talking about, we're never going to, uh, agree to this. And I think we, we do want to ask that location question, the financing question. And the other thing we talked about was having out there what the fees would be. Uh, because, you know, I brought with me what we went over at that time period and I went out and talked to people about these fees and they asked me, are you crazy? And, you know, and I put it out on Facebook, but that's not a good thing because everybody's negative, uh, out there. But I, but we said we need to put out the real numbers and see what feedback, uh, we get. If, I mean, if literally this is our operating cost and everyone comes back and says seventeen hundred thirty dollars annually for a family just is, is a showstopper, we need to know that, uh, before, beforehand. So, I mean, I'm still in agreement with what we talked about in January to go do. But I think you need to do what you say you're doing here is get with everyone, so it doesn't get undermined before it starts.
So part of that is asking not just that, but asking at what range are they willing to support with fees? So that way.
Right, because that determines the tax side.
Yes, so we can understand kind of the difference between what we're willing to spend to generate revenue versus the subsidy.
I think, um, we also need to be clear whether you need to have a membership in order to access rec programs at a facility. So I'm thinking if you offer a water aerobics class, is it sufficient to pay fifty dollars for the session of water aerobics? Or do you have to have an individual membership so that if you want to stay in the building after your class finishes and, and do laps, you're not, uh, you know, that, that's taken care of.
Yeah, that wouldn't be any different than how we operate our memberships now. So you pay for a program, you're in there for the program. If you want to use the facility on a drop-in, like lap lane basis, you would need a membership or daily rate.
Aaron, on the, the survey or Jason, either one, the option that we're discussing is this fifty-five to sixty-five million dollar facility, is that right?
I think that's a general, like, mid-level aquatic facility that could generate some revenue, so yeah, I think.
So we're just keeping it to one, I mean, I, I, I like giving kind of option or variety, like which option, but then I also don't want us to put something out there that's not realistic or not feasible.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know.
And we've talked about that internally, you know, if people's palette for a budget is twenty-five to thirty million, we probably need to educate them as to what that is.
Yep.
Well, and that's, yes, I agree with that and I think that there's very different opinions on what a twenty-five million dollar facility looks like. And so I just, I think in thinking through that survey was the, do we give options? But how, how much can we really put in a survey that people are going to read and respond to? Because sometimes those can get detailed and long and I know the, the initial, um, survey we did for move MHK, I think was out. I mean, it was pretty detailed and the more questions or the longer people are just clicking and, or checking things.
They've actually got, they've got that dialed in to a certain length and they won't exceed it because to your point, they'll stop answering it. But it's longer than you think it is, but there is a limit to what they'll do. This should be on the shorter side ideally.
And, and people who do surveys do them well, I'm not arguing that at all. I'm just saying I think we are, um, we are not at a point where we can ask people on a survey if they're interested in supporting indoor water and where. And it's, might cost sixty-five million dollars, but we don't have any partners in it, you know? I think we need to get to the point where we can add, show the public, these are the things we'd like to do and the school board is going to help us and the university, even the university might help us. There's, there's been a little bit of discussion about student fees, you know, I mean.
Karen, I think once we're at that point is when we would be able to potentially talk about a ballot question.
Yeah, but.
And this survey is, is, is just a data point. And in fact, it could help us go to those other entities and say, look, we asked the community, if we're going to have this, we need your support. And then we can either have yes or no.
Right, but we don't know what the county's planning to do with the, with the rodeo and all that kind of thing. We don't know, um, what the school's doing with their swimming teams and they don't even have a diving team. Um, we don't know if the university has any interest in having, um, abilities to go to our swimming, you know? Um, I, spending twenty-two thousand dollars to, to find out how people feel, to me, is a waste of money.
So to go through, uh, the city, Danielle and Jason have had, started having conversations, school district and the county. And so some of those conversations are happening already, finding out if we have that opportunity to discuss that, which is where that August one will be. I think where we're at though, um, the community is asking us to make a decision as to whether or not we're willing to put something, um, on a ballot. And so trying to, like Peter, Peter said, the data points we need, trying to figure out what, what we need. Partnerships, one thing we said, it feels like, Karen, you just feel like K-State also has to be part of that, that discussion. I think the question will be, is that, is that a deal breaker for you or for us? If they don't participate in the conversations, does that mean we're not willing to put it on the?
No, I don't think it does, but I do think, um, I, I just don't see the efficacy of the survey. I, I think we kind of know what people think, the people, the Marlins are all gung ho, other people are absolutely not. Um, people really, um, want to support it, I think, but they don't u- understand what it might cost and, you know, this kind of thing.
And I guess I use this survey as also an educational opportunity for us to get that info. Yes, we are only collecting our, our response rate, we want four hundred. But I think more people see the survey than that. And I, I see this as, as really an educational opportunity and for us to get information out, to have more collective conversations with people as well, but.
I think it's an opportunity for us to work with USD three eighty-three, Riley County, even K-State, to talk about options. When you think about CECO Park or you think about other venues in the community, what is it our community would like to see us work together on? Starting that discussion now and incorporating it into the survey may give us an opportunity to realize something we don't know today. The other thing I would offer, many organizations have expressed a preference to participate in the operational side of this. Meaning, school district will commit X dollars for their teams to practice in this facility. K-State students would be willing to do something in this facility. I don't know if the county has an interest in the day-to-day operations, but you also have to consider how complex a multi-party capital investment of this magnitude would appear on any type of ballot. And if you're going to wait to ask that ballot question until you have cash in hand or commitments in hand for multimillion dollar capital investments without going to the voters, I think that is a very lofty goal. An entity needs to administer and foster this thing to the point. We may be able to partner with the county, we may be able to partner with the school district, we don't know that yet. That is a big reason why we're going with the survey. Can we accommodate any of their interests, any of their potential projects in the community to see where the community ranks them?
Going to them with the survey, to, going to the, those entities, the school district, the county, to see what, what we need to incorporate in it.
Yes, get, get their feedback on what they would like to hear from the community. I think CECO Park offers an array of opportunity for, for all three to possibly work together. For, for all three to possibly work together. You wouldn't necessarily have to put all amenities on one question. But it could happen. We don't know. We gotta, we gotta feel out these other entities and see what they want to entertain as part of a partnership. And if indoor water is the only thing people wanna talk about, you know, we'll get that feedback. But they may have other ideas. They may have, they may. The county may s- need assistance to move the rodeo and the fairgrounds out of Seaco Park. And if they were to express that, we could ask the public, would you be interested in assisting the county in financially moving the fairgrounds and the rodeo out of Seaco Park? And replacing it potentially with other amenities.
And on the, sorry, on the funding side of this, one of the things that we know is people want indoor water. Well, we ha- haven't asked them, that we anticipate asking in the survey, are you willing to pay for indoor water? And those are two different questions, and I think I've said that for the past year. So one of the things, we wanna be real direct about, are you willing to pay for indoor water? Or whatever this could transition to based on some of these other conversations.
I think that this discussion uh needs to continue when we've seen the survey. And we have a better appreciation of what is being asked. Um, I would heartily encourage you to. Get these conversations with the university, with the school district, with the county underway quickly because if you wanna have a draft survey ready in the next month. We need that input, and it may require more than one discussion with them. I think Thursday's meeting was helpful in terms of starting to lay the groundwork. Um, for those of you who weren't there, Jason made the same presentation at the city county, county meeting on, uh, last week. You'll remember that Commissioner Fokie did suggest sending uh the survey out to other parts of the county. To see if there was interest there. Um, you might talk about that with, is it ETC? What, how, how would that affect their sampling methodologies? I think we'd get buy-in from the county, obviously, if we're asking, what kind of projects are you going, do you need assistance or collaboration with? They're going to want, see some representation from Leonardville, from Randolph, from Keats.
Commissioner Adam Check, if we did expand um the ET ser- ETC survey to um reach out to folks um out in the county. Would you want financial participation from the county, or would you be comfortable with the city footing the additional cost to reach out and survey folks in the county?
I think I'd need to know what that additional cost might be. If it's the cost of printing a few more questionnaires and mail-in costs. Um, we're already talking about including those questions of interest. Um, I, I don't think that the um. You know, given, given the population of the rest of the county, which is relatively small, um, I don't see that it would. Increase costs all that much.
Thank you for that feedback.
I think the caveat to that is that you're gonna have people answering questions that they're not, that as of right now, we're talking about a city tax that they're not actually voting on a tax for. And so.
We may be able to spam that.
We could, I mean.
If it's sales tax, they're, they're paying that.
Are you able to identify um how much reach, for example, the, the pools, who's buying pool passes? I know that, um, alright, so Randolph or Oldsburg does, well, which is actually in Pot County, I guess, but, you know, there is a small pool. Available for people on that side of the northern, that side of the northern tier of the county. Are you able to see who else is using? Are we getting people from Ogden? Are we getting people from?
Hold up place or data.
Council Grove used to always, their swim team would come up to the naterium when it was open, I think, like twice a week or something like that. So. There, there is interest in the hinterlands. I think we'd probably be this worse than that. Um, I think Susan's right. We need to see the survey and have a little more discussion about that. Thank you, Aaron. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Mayor McCullough, don't forget to ask for public comment on this item.
Thank you. Seeing none. Um, Danielle?
I will, will comment very brief this evening. Um, yes. So legislative uh meeting, our next legislative meeting is on August fifth. Uh, we do not have a meeting next week. It is a fifth Tuesday, so we will meet again on August fifth. Um, August twelfth, we will have our, uh, another budget workshop. And then on August nineteenth is when you will um take action on the WRM IRB. Proposal as well as the workforce housing sales tax proposal that you saw this evening. So those are kind of a lineup for our next um couple meetings. Uh, intergovernmental luncheon is on Monday, July twenty-eighth. Um, you have your Military Relation Committee Luncheon on August sixth. Established Business Leaders Coffee and Conversation on August fifteenth. And then our next Joint City County County Meeting is on Thursday, August twenty-first at four P M. Uh, as we talked about at our meeting last week, if you all have any topics or anything that you would be interested in hearing from, the county uh does not currently have a topic for our August meeting. Uh, at our September meeting, we will be talking about R H I D. Uh, and we will also be talking about um community land trust as well. So that is all that I have for you this evening, unless you all have questions.
Questions?
No questions, but I will not be at the August fifth meeting.
Thank you.
Danielle, what, what are the um, the dates for your meeting with people about the budget? The general public?
Yeah, so, hold on, let me pull up a calendar real quick.
Sorry.
I gotta, no, you're fine. I gotta look at the calendar. Um, so on August sixteenth, that's a Saturday morning, we will be at the Douglas Activity Center at nine o'clock in the morning. And then on August twenty-first, that's a Thursday, we will be at the Eisenhower Activity Center at five-thirty um to do our budget open houses.
We really hope that people will avail themselves of that opportunity. Anything else? Would someone like to move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five City Commission Work Session.
Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yay.